You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, it being 6:00 PM.
Three twenty in progress.
I will call to order the December fourteenth meeting of the planning board here at Wickham Hall. I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selectmen's Rep Ken Colby. Alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Alternate Michael Scungio.
Here.
And alternate Brian Vertigal.
We come slide for Ken.
Okay, slides here. So we have a full board, so we will be not deceiting any of the alternates. And just have the record show that slide is here for... You can sit up here at the table with the slide. You good? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tonight's agenda. We have the approval of the October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three minutes. And under applications and public hearings, we have proposed twenty-twenty-four zoning amendments to the Swansea zoning ordinance. Item number B, Planning Board number twenty-three dash zero-two-seven, that's a boundary line adjustment. De Bernardo Associates LLC on behalf of Robjohn LLC requests a review of a boundary line adjustment for properties located along Base Hill Road. Subject properties are shown currently at tax map two-oh-three, lots twenty-two and twenty-three in the business district. Item C, Planning Board number two-three dash zero-two-nine is another boundary line adjustment. Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Benjamin Steiner, Clyde L. Keane Jr., and Carol Cooper requests a boundary line adjustment at properties located along Westport Village Road. Subject properties are currently shown at tax map two-forty-six, lots seventy-three and seventy-four in the residential district. Item D is Planning Board number twenty-three dash zero-two-zero, that's a site plan review continued from September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C on behalf of All Purpose Storage Swansea, West LLC requests site plan review for construction of a multi-tenant service facility to be leased to various service businesses at one-fifteen Base Hill Road. Subject property is currently shown at tax map fifty-two, lot sixteen in the rural agricultural district and the business district. Item E, Planning Board number two-three dash zero-two-eight, that's a multi-tenant application. DSM Realty and New Hampshire Liquor Commission requests multi-tenant review for operation of a retail sales liquor outlet at the existing commercial building located at eleven West Swansea Road. Subject property is currently shown at tax map two-oh-four, lot four in the commercial industrial district. Application, let's see, okay. Number F, I mean item F, Planning Board number two-three dash zero-three-zero, multi-tenant application. Brian McCormick on behalf of Swansea Homestead Offices LLC requests multi-tenant review for operation of a professional office space at the existing commercial building at two-seventeen Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is currently shown at tax map one-oh-five, lot one in the business district. Item G, Planning Board number two-three dash zero-three-one, Honda Dealership Site Plan Application. Menadnock Land Planning on behalf of Kate Donovan, L L C requests site plan review for construction of an external service building at the property located at five-six-seven Menadnock Highway. Subject property is currently shown at tax map two-two-two, lot thirty in the business district. Discussions of the business, Alatech substantial progress review, and any other business as may be required. Going to the top of the page here, we need regional impact. That would be a vote deciding whether anything on tonight's agenda affects surrounding towns and whether we should notify them as such. Anybody see that? We need regional impact. If not, a motion, a motion that we do not would be in order.
Motion, that's not needed.
Okay. A motion by Richard Lane that nothing on tonight's agenda requires regional impact. Is there a second? Second by Jane Johnson, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. And to start off, we have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
So move.
Motion. Okay, motion by Michael York to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion, any changes or anything in the minutes? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Brings up the first item on our agenda, which is, it's the proposed twenty-twenty-four amendments to the Swansea zoning ordinance. That's proposed by the planning board. And that is a public hearing, and I will open up the public hearing on that. And Julius, you're, are you just presenting or are you just putting things up on the screen or?
That's up to you, I, so I'm putting up the ordinance as it's written wholly.
Okay.
If anybody didn't already print out a whole copy of the ordinance and handout.
Yeah.
So I have to present it up here in case I want to go, if you'd like to go line by line, I can do that. Or we could take a look at the handouts, or we could go that direction, or it's up to you.
Well, we'll dive into it and see where it goes. So, the first proposed amendment is amendment to the zoning ordinance to update the description of the Village Business District One and Village Business District Two zones. The zoning map is further amended to show Village Business District One north of the Wilson Pond Dam and south of Keen Line. It is further amended to show Village Business District Two along North Winchester Street and north and south Main Street. So that pertains to, I think, to a couple other items on that as well as to the zoning change. One of them, all Business District One, Village Business One, which is primarily located in West Swansea here, is proposed to be changed to Village Business Two. And the areas up will be described in another amendment, North Swansea, which we're talking about there, is going to be changed from regular Business District to Village Business District One. And the differences there are, the Village Business District One has less, fewer things that you can do, fewer items that you can do with the business. Village Business District Two, there are more things that you can do with the piece of property. Basically, the differences between those two. So that first amendment pretty much is to amend the map, the town map, that designates where those zones are, are going to be. So amendment two, amend the zoning ordinance to permit the use of attached accessory dwelling units on rear lots on a provision of Section three AA accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And that's something that came down from the state, I do believe, about allowing accessory dwelling units on a rear lot. We allow them on regular lots. We're just clarifying that they're allowed on the rear lots. So is there any discussion on that? That's going to be a new, you have that one up on the screen, it's just going to be a new item number seven, correct? And item number seven will say, the use of accessory dwelling units on rear lots is permitted under the provisions of Section three AAA accessory dwelling unit ordinance amended March twenty-twenty-four, if it passes. That's what it's going to say in the zoning ordinance. Any discussion on that one? No, guess not. Okay, now amendment number three. Let me just read through this. Amend zoning ordinance to include Village Business District along the western side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line to the outlet of Wilson Pond Dam. The airport property frontage along Route thirty-two affected by this extends two-hundred feet into the lot. Village Business District One includes along the eastern side, side state, should say, of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line and continues up Lake Street on the north side in Village Business District One. Additional lots located on Walnut Street up to and including Lot twenty-four on the north side of the street and thirty-nine on the south side. Additional lots on Grove Street up to and including Lot forty-six on the north side and fifty on the south side on Park Street up to and including Lot thirty on the north side and thirty-five on the south side are included. Lake Street includes a lot up to forty-one on the north side. Now, who wants to explain what I just said? Who wants to explain what that means?
Which I can, too.
I think we need to further explain what that means because this is what you're going to be reading in the voting booth. And it just, I think we should reword it so it reflects what we're trying to do. And what we're trying to do, pretty much what we're doing is what we talked about before, and is that, that is, we're rezoning Village Business District One, which is in West Swansea. Again, that's up Main Street of West Swansea, that side of Main Street. It's the Mill complex down here, and it's up North Winchester Street as well, that's Business One, and well, as well as a piece over by Grove Street over here. Anyway, that's going to be rezoned, or proposed to be rezoned to Village Business Two. That's part of what this was talking about. Village Business One is going to be up in North Swansea from the Keen Line down Route thirty-two. Down to where I think the dam is on the pond. So, I'm going to propose that. We might change that a little bit, a few scribbles here from going over it past week or so, but if we reword it, say that, okay. Amendment number three, amend zoning ordinance to rezone the Business District along the western side of State Route thirty-two because right now it's zoned all business along Route thirty-two. That Village Business One that we're talking about proposing is all Business District now. So if we say that it is to rezone the Business District along the western side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line to the outlet of Wilson Pond Dam. The airport property frontage along thirty-two affected by this extends two-hundred feet into the lot. And then we go on to say, eastern side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line, and continues up Lake Street, because this is a description of the lot, and continues up Lake Street to Lot forty, I think it was forty-one, on the north side. And then it would say, additional lots located on Walnut Street up to and including Lot twenty-four on the north side of the street and thirty-nine on the south side. Additional lots on Grove Street up to and including Lot forty-six on the north side and fifty on the south side. On Park Street up to and including Lot thirty on the north side and thirty-five on the south side are included. Then maybe adding a sentence underneath that says, all of the aforementioned properties are to be rezoned from Business to Village Business One. So, that's, I think that explains it a little bit better for someone in the voting booth taking a look at it. And I don't know, Beverly, did you get any of that?
I got some of it.
You got some of it?
Not all of it.
Yeah, because it's a big change from that paragraph there, but it sort of, it moves it around a little bit to let anybody know that that's what's going on in between North Swansea and West Swansea here. And there's another one we probably need to reword later on, but do you want me to go through it again?
No, do you have it written down yourself?
Well, I sort of do, but it looks like that. But I can, I can give you those notes or...
Yeah, that would be fine.
Or I can bring that by the office, too, we can type it up.
And we can do it.
Okay, would you do that, type it up and then send it to me?
Yeah, we can just go over in the office. So, this being a public hearing, we can change wording for the proposed zoning amendments, but if we have to change the meaning, or if we change the meaning of the amendments, then we have to have another hearing after this. If this, in my opinion, is just changing the wording of it, it pretty much says the same thing, but what we're doing, rezoning and proposing, things like that. Yes, sir?
Scott, maybe you start off by saying, you, properties in the Business District will be zoned to Village Business District One, and then say that includes...
I did, that's what I said in the beginning here.
And listen, I quote at the end, I just...
I know, but it was, there's a lot in there, but let me just read what, see if it's...
Because if they read that, that might be enough for them to say, oh, I don't...
Let's see if it's what you're thinking. So I took the number three, and it states amend zoning ordinance to include Village Business. I cross that out, and I had amend zoning ordinance to rezone the Business District along the western side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line to the outlet of Wilson Pond Dam.
Okay, so maybe say from Business District Two, Village Business, and that includes, and then explain it.
So let me see, where would we put that includes?
Just start reading again.
Okay.
Trying to take your last sentence and bring it up to the top.
Yeah, I want to read your last sentence.
So I'm going to start reading again, just interrupt me where that should be put in. Amend zoning ordinance to rezone the Business District...
To Village Business District One.
Okay.
Lots including the...
Okay, yeah, I've got that at the end of it, we can put that right in there.
That's all I'm saying.
Yep, rezone, yeah, Village, Village District One, that would work right there. And then just continue on the west side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line to the outlet of Wilson Pond Dam. That says that whole line on the west side there. And then it mentions about the airport property frontage along Route thirty-two affected by this extends two-hundred feet into the lot. That sort of needs to be in there just to let us know on that west side because it pertains to the west side. So, then it gets into the east side of it as well, let's see, further down. So now, eastern side of State Route thirty-two from the Keen Line and continues up to Lake Street, I should take the two out, continues up Lake Street. I'll just read through it again, to Lot forty-one on the north side. Let's see, additional lots located on Walnut Street up to and including Lot twenty-four on the north side of the street and thirty-nine on the south side. Additional lots on Grove Street up to and including Lot forty-six on the north side and fifty on the south side on Park Street up to and including Lot thirty on the north side and thirty-five on the south side are included. And then we could leave it there because the last sentence I had said, just a second, I'll get to it, the last sentence I had said, all of the aforementioned properties are to be rezoned from Business to, Business to Village Business One. And I'll get to you in a second there. The reason that we're naming all these different lots, Lot twenty-four, Lot forty-one, thirty-two, and all that type of stuff is just to make it more specific for our zoning ordinance because in prior years when we've rezoned or proposed rezoning like that, it's generally been the east side of, like we're saying, or west side of Route thirty-two down to the dam, and that's it. You know, you didn't really know if this lot or that lot was included or not. So Julius has included all of those lots in there to make it more specific as to what it's talking about. You had a question?
So you want to take the word two out where it says from the Keen Line and continues up to Lake Street? And I think you want to keep the two there because you want to go down from the Keen Line to Lake Street, but then you have to designate the properties on Lake Street which are changing.
Okay.
Which doesn't, it doesn't say additional lots on, the lots on Lake Street, doesn't say those lots in this description.
Up to Lake Street, let's see, to Lot forty-one, it says, or I would say to Lot forty-one, because on the bottom of that you see, Lake Street includes lots up to forty-one on the north side, it says that in the very left.
So it might be up to, because you're talking about coming down Route thirty-two from Keen Line.
Yeah.
Up to Lake Street and no further, up to the north side of Lake Street, you could say up to the north side of Lake Street, which would include lots forty-one and on the north side. Right? I'm just saying, that somehow, if you take the word two out there, if it's, if you're talking about coming all the way down, up, up Lake Street...
And not including Lake Street is what you're getting at, is that...
From the Keen Line up Lake Street is what you're saying.
Yeah, and not including Lake Street is what you think it might be interpreted as.
Right, so it could be better worded...
Up to Lake Street, or it probably could be a little bit better worded than that.
Up the other side, up to include Lot forty-one, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that particular sentence, Lake Street includes lots up to forty-one on the north side.
Yeah.
Now, is that up to and including Lot forty-one, or up to and excluding Lot forty-one?
I don't know. Do you know that? If we're including Lot forty-one on Lake Street? Julius, you know? We are including it. Okay, so that's a good point.
It should be up to and including...
And including Lot forty-one, yeah. So definitely, just pencil that in there, Julius, would you please?
That's Lot forty-one, forty-one.
Including Lot forty-one, yes.
That's okay.
And that's on the north side of Lake Street.
We do have a question online, if you could explain the difference between the two districts and what that might mean? I'm sure everybody else might be thinking the same question as well. What do they gain, what do they lose, and so on?
Okay, and again, now we're talking about Village Business One as opposed to Business District. I think that's what the question probably is, right? Okay, let me just dig up my little portion of it here. In our zoning, I think it's on twenty-nine of our zoning ordinance. Let's see, on our zoning ordinance, it starts page twenty-nine. So, Village Business District One currently includes single-family dwellings, these are uses, allowable uses, single-family dwelling, restaurant, hotel, motel or bed and breakfast facility, professional business offices, club or lodge, retail business establishment, personal service shop or service establishment, banking or financial institution, nursing home, home occupation and home-based businesses, manufactured housing on individual lots provided they meet the requirements of the district and all of the requirements of this ordinance. So there are also special exceptions allowed in that. In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after the issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. And those uses would be recreational facility conducted as a business only when such business activity is conducted indoors, daycare facility, gasoline service stations, repair garage or body shop, motor vehicle dealership, wholesale or manufacturing facility, vehicle wash facility. So, those are the uses that are currently allowed now in Village Business District One. So in the proposal, hotel motel is going to be removed from that as a use. And I believe club or lodge was supposed to be removed from that. I didn't see it on the list, but I thought we had to remove that. Do you recall? I think we had to remove the club or lodge from there. And also, nursing home was removed. And under special exceptions, the only thing allowed in special exceptions under this proposal would be a recreational facility conducted as a business only when such business activity is conducted indoors, and a daycare facility.
On my list here, I got banking and financial institutions crossed off.
Right.
Yeah.
I think you're looking at Business District?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, right there, yeah, I see. Okay, yeah, we cross that off there, you're right, yeah. I didn't have that in mind here, correct? Yeah, banking, oh yeah, we've got it right in that one, okay.
So I think the only one we're missing the actual physical ordinance, because this is a live document at work level, is club or lodge, so I just crossed it out, so you can see that that has changed.
Okay, good change.
It's all right up there.
All right, good. Do I even have to read that, since it's up there? So, the special exceptions that will be removed would be gasoline service stations, repair garage and/or body shop, motor vehicle dealership, wholesale or manufacturing facility, vehicle wash facility, and also, and also multifamily will be removed from there as well, from that Village Business One. So, and again, this is for online, I'm talking, and for anybody here too, just to refresh. And under business uses, what is allowed in the business is a restaurant, educational, governmental or religious facility, hotel motel inn or bed and breakfast facility, professional and business offices, retail sales service, bank or financial institution, funeral home, private club or lodge, commercial greenhouse or nursery, home occupation and home-based businesses, and let's see, function halls, indoor auctions, recreation, recreational facility conducted as a business, research and development, and accessory uses. And there are also special exceptions allowed in the Business District, and that is special exception for daycare facility, gas station, on gasoline service stations, repair garage or body shop, motor vehicle dealership, wholesale, warehousing or manufacturing facility, industrial park, vehicle wash facility, self-storage facility, and also multifamily. So, let's see, also, okay, the removal, processing of clay and limestone, we can do that under special exception, or gravel for sale, drive-through facility, let's see, licensed nursing home, hospital, bulk storage, distribution of large quantities of material, liquid, solid, gaseous, intended for sale. So, as you can hear or see, that there's a lot less going to be allowed in Village Business One if it's changed to Business One because it is business now. And that all of that that I just read is allowed in that North Swansea area that we're talking about to rezone it to Village Business One, which is why it's being proposed to be rezoned to Village Business One is because it's more of a neighborhood area there and lots of those things would never be able to go in anyways, just not, you know, lots, yes?
Do we know how many, if any, non-conforming uses we will be creating with this change?
Hmm, we won't be creating any because they'll be grandfathered in if it's changed, so...
It's still part of non-conforming.
It would be if you stop using the business for a year or more, then it's non-conforming and you wouldn't be able to do it without a special exception.
But we don't have any before.
No, we don't.
We do have several multifamily, haven't we?
There are, yeah, yeah. So, let's see, where are we here? Oh yeah, we were just reading the uses, the differences between Village Business One and Business District. So, there you have it in a nutshell, what is and what isn't allowed there. Let me get back to my paper here. So we're still on amendment number three. So we're talking about rewording that in a way that's easier to understand, which I can go over it, Julius and I can go over it in the office there, and we can get Beverly a copy of it there. But basically, it's just going to be easier to know that that amendment is all about rezoning the Business District along Route thirty-two over North Swansea there, down to Wilson Pond, rezoning it to Village Business One, which has less permitted uses. So, any other discussion on that number three?
Somebody online asked, under the new change, would they no longer be allowed to create apartments in their house to be rented out?
Let's see.
That'd be ADU.
Yeah, accessory dwelling unit is allowed there. Multifamily, which is three family or more, would not be allowed. So duplex would be because that's not multifamily. So that, I don't know, does that answer their question? We can't hear them, right? You can just hear them?
They're typing in the chat, if they were to enter the voice chat, you would be able to hear them.
Okay, so that would be the answer to that question.
So he asked that answer, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just let me know if there's somebody on there, right? If I don't see, it just hit my attention.
Yeah, I always raise my hand.
Yep, I forget about those guys being on. So, any more discussion on proposed amendment number three? I guess not. So, that brings us to amendment number four, which is amend Section five, Article A-one in the zoning ordinance to update permitted uses within Village Business District One. This includes the removal, which we just talked about, of hotel, motel, banking or financial institution, and also club or lodge, that Julius just put in there. So, again, that's, that's like a formality, like a housekeeping part of it there, where it's got to be a separate article to remove those permitted uses now. Let me see, what else we have here? I don't know, I don't think anyone had, anybody have any discussion on that? We've been discussing it for a while here anyway on that, yes?
This is on the number four?
This is number four, yeah.
Okay. The last sentence.
Yep.
This includes the, hotel, motel, banking institution, or financial institution, semicolon, nursing home.
Yep.
So nursing home is being removed.
They are all being removed, and also club and lodge is being removed from that.
It doesn't...
It doesn't say that, I know it, but I think they missed it, and I think Julius just put it back up on there, that it was supposed to be removed from there. In all those further discussions we had, it was removed from there.
Just a minor punctuation point, since hotel motel exists as a letter from here right now, it should have a semicolon after it, not a comma. Hotel motel, semicolon, because the semicolon separates the uses?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
In the regular ordinance.
Okay, in the ordinance, but actually in...
That's right.
Okay, I understand.
That's why financial institution, semicolon, nursing home, yeah.
Yes, sir. Could you just identify yourself for the record for...
Yes, my name is Charles [inaudible]. I just was curious, can taxes be put into this amendment?
Meaning what?
Meaning if, let's say, you have five hundred dwelling apartments and you know that's going to need, we're going to need more cops, more firemen, more drainage, more school teachers, maybe five hundred kids at the stop for the school bus to pick up, who knows, whoever's going in there, I don't know. But maybe these things should be taxed to where it's like a small home, each one. And it takes, that'll put a stop to some of this thing that's going on here in Swansea because this is, this is really, really bad. And politically, no, no, exactly what's going on here.
Pretty much what you're, what you're talking about are what's called impact fees. Some towns have them, some don't, we don't here, but those are done in the planning board, site plan review, and that type of things.
Can it be done here?
It cannot be done there, no. No, it has to be done, it has to be adopted by the town, and the town has to set up a few, I think, part of it has to do with capital, yeah, capital improvement and... few, I think, part of it has to do with capital, yeah, capital improvement, and capital reserve funds for those specific items, and when, just a second, I'll get to you. When they do have the impact fees, they are designated for a specific purpose, like the school, or the fire department, or the police department, and that's how they are spent, and when they're spent.
There's, you know, there's big profit in that, and if they're going to do such things in this town, they need to pay for it.
Yep.
And that means each one has to be like, maybe like a small house, because us as homeowners, we're going to take the brunt of that. And that's what's going to happen. And I think that's why a lot of people are down here. And if we can do that, it gives us, you know, some leverage. I also think the airport, since it's on by Keen, we need to do something about that with taxes, to bring that money in. If we got to hear jets, and...
We've been down that road a few times, too.
Yeah, while it's our town, we need to do something.
Exactly. Mr. Jasmine, our code enforcement, you had a question?
For the questioner, I mean, the select board's talked about impact fees a lot this year, and if he wants to take that matter up in the select board, I'm sure we'll be happy to hear it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know if it could be...
I'd encourage you to do so. Amendment number four, which again is removing the hotel motel, banking or financial institution, nursing home, and clever lodge out of, let's see, Village Business One. Any other questions on that? I guess none. Seeing none, I guess we'll move to amendment number five. So this amended, let's see, number five, amend section five, article A2 in the zoning ordinance to update uses in Village Business District One permitted by issuance of a special exception. This includes the removal of gasoline service stations, repair garage or body shop, motor vehicle dealership, wholesale or manufacturing facility, and vehicle wash facility. They would be removed out of Village Business One as an allowed use under special exception, which they currently are allowed now. Any discussion on that? Nope, pretty self-explanatory, thank you. Number, let's see, number six, amend section five, article A2 in the zoning ordinance to update uses in Village Business District One permitted by issuance of a special exception. This includes removal of multi-family dwellings. That pretty much self-explanatory. Number seven, amend section five, article A3 in the zoning ordinance to update restrictions within Village Business District One. Restrictions include no building or structure in this district may extend, I mean, may exceed 35 feet in height. So, again, that's just a new height restriction for Village Business One. And if all of this goes through, the only Village Business District One will be in North Swansea, over by the airport there. Any questions on that one? Probably not. Now, amendments eight, amend section five, article B2 in the zoning ordinance to update uses in business district and the business district permitted by issuance of a special exception. This includes the removal of self-storage facility. So, that just removes that one item as a special exception. Planning board thought that that might be a good idea, because there are a lot of the self-storage units going up in town here, and they're taking a lot of good business land away, even though I'm sure they'll be used, and they are used, lots of people use them, but still, it looked like it was taking up a lot of land, so that's why it's proposed to remove it from business district. Okay, that brings us to, brings us to number nine, no discussion on that, I guess. Number nine, amend section five, article B1 in the zoning ordinance to update permitted uses within business district. This includes the addition of one-family to two-family dwelling conversions that do not change the footprint of the existing one-family dwelling, and also retail electric vehicle charging station, which we have a letter here concerning that, concerning a starting charging station. But the, as far as a single family to, one-family to two-family is how it's written here, one-family to two-family dwelling conversions that do not change the footprint of the existing one-family dwelling, why not? Not changing anything. So, any questions on that?
Just point out that the handout we gave out here is got nine and seven reversed, and the reason nine is moved up to seven is it relates to District One. So if the handout's there, you know, it's...
What exactly are you referring to?
On this handout that Julius asked for us all, number nine on his handout is your number seven that you read, and number seven that's on this handout is number nine that you read. No big deal.
Okay.
But there's some people...
I'll take your word for it.
These people are confused, I noticed.
Okay. So, did I miss one there or something?
No. Julius can't count.
Okay. We'll just leave it at that.
You're good.
Okay. You had something?
Yeah, in reference to this one, the retail electric vehicle charging station, when we last met and went through this, we, my interpretation was that we had decided that there would be no retail electric charging stations allowed within this district, Business District One. The allowable use would be if, say, an apartment complex has a privilege, or as an addition to the resident, would have a card, and would be, if they'd have a charging station within that complex, that would be an amenity to the resident. It was not, my interpretation was that we were not going to allow any retail service station type of situation with electric charging.
That's noted in our minutes, too, that we just approved what you just said.
This refers to the business district, not Business District One.
Right, yeah, just business district, yep. It wasn't, it wasn't Business One.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's what he said, I know, but it's Business One, I mean, Business District, not Business One. And you're right, when we discussed, we put it as an allowable use in the business district, but not a retail. It was allowable use if a company wanted to put charging stations for their employees or something like that. It was allowable use, because as it stands now, if they wanted to do it, it isn't mentioned in the zoning, not allowable use, special exception or otherwise, they'd have to get a variance for it from the zoning board of adjustment. So, planning board decided to put it as allowable use, again, not retail one, just for accessory use on the business, in case a business wanted to put one in, and see how it went from there. Would you identify yourself, just for record, please, ma'am?
Marlins and Swansea, just so I understand in my little head, so what you're saying, electric charging station, so if Nanotech's employees have electric cars, if they want to put one in their parking lot, that's acceptable use?
If this goes through, yes.
Right, okay. So if it's, if it's not already there, then if we don't change it this way, they'd have to go for a variance to the zoning board in order to get one installed.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. So this is just to try and make it easier for our existing businesses to accommodate their employees.
Right, we aren't requiring businesses to put in so many electric charging units. We're just saying that, you know, if you want to put one in for your employees, it'll be allowable use, if the town passes that.
Got you. Barbara?
I'm sorry, I was getting confused here. So the retail electric vehicle charging stations will be an allowable use in the business?
No, it wasn't retail when we discussed it. It was just the charging stations, and that was it, not retail.
So you're changing that?
The handout says they're allowed.
Says the retailer allows. Well, that, unless the board remembers differently, that isn't what the board decided on.
Just strike the word retail.
Yeah, no retail, so, yeah, it's not retail.
But keep electric vehicles start charging stations.
In the business district, yeah, as an allowable use.
How that's supposed to read them, because it's not...
Yeah. Let me get back to it here. So, it's under, in our handout, or in our paper, it's under proposed amendment number nine, and I'll just read the whole thing again. Amend section five, which is the business section, article B1 in the zoning ordinance to update permitted uses within business district. This includes the addition of one-family to two-family dwelling conversions that do not change the footprint of the existing one-family dwelling, and it says here retail electric vehicle charging stations. So, we're crossing out the word retail, and now I would read, that next, that last sentence would be electric vehicle charging station. It would say that at the end. So, it's two uses that are being proposed to be allowed here. One of them is a conversion one, and the other one is, and I'll read it, electric vehicle charging station.
So where are retail electric charging stations allowed?
We don't have them yet, but they would be considered a vehicle fueling station, and they would most likely be allowed in any zone that has a service station, gasoline stations allowed in it, which is, I think, under special exception, maybe business zone. But again...
Oh, business district, not business zone?
No, same thing, business district, same thing.
Okay, because right now, this retail, you can't do it. If, I mean, if you take that retail out, then you're saying you can't do it in the business district. So if Gamarlos wants to, well, Gamarlos wants to put in a charging station...
It's an accessory, it's not a...
Well, no, if they want to...
To sell, for retail, yeah, for retail sales, it would not be allowed, yeah, Gamarlos is in business district down here, yeah. It would not be allowed.
But that doesn't make sense, because that's a place that has commodities, I mean, you know, people would want to, I mean, it's got a gas station there, you know, it's a logical, it's a big parking lot, lots of space to put something like that in, people could charge their cars and have a meal. So why wouldn't you want that spot for retail electric charging station? I mean, that just seems like really amenable use for that type of location. So I don't, if you're not going to have it there, where are you going to have it?
Keen.
Yeah.
They would have to get a special exception.
They will have to get a special exception because of the service station part of it.
Right.
And those are considered, a vehicle fueling station is what an electric charging station is.
But if a factory wanted to put one in that's non-retail, that's just for their employees, that would be allowed.
And I'm saying that's an ideal location for retail, and it's, you know, a gas station is different than, I mean, an electric charging station doesn't have the impact at all that, other than traffic, but it doesn't have the impact of fuel storage, you know, that a gas station does. So I don't even know that your definition makes sense to lump in charging station with a gas fueling station, because they really are different.
I think this goes back to what Scott was saying earlier, is that we're trying to maybe control a little bit what our prime business land is being used for. So, if it was just allowed retail charging, we could have retail charging all up and down Route 10, every lot.
Yeah, but you're not likely going to, because it's too expensive.
Well, it could.
And it's not something that people willingly, just like putting in a gas station.
But what could we, you know, it's like mini-storage. Do we want to have all of, every, all of the same thing? Do we want to just have that?
That's kind of like out there. I mean, the reality of how that's going to play out is, I mean, if you look where charging stations are now, they're usually someplace where a person can do some other type of business while their car's charging, and it's a small footprint compared to a gas station. So it's not like you're going to have, I don't understand the concern at all. And it's expensive, it's not easy to put in a charging station. So it's not, I mean, it's probably, I don't know, the storage units are probably easier to put in than a charging station. And we are having a lot of those on our business district. But, I mean, I don't see the concern for a retail charging station, it could only be a plus to the businesses that are existing.
Steve, oh, John, are you finished? Okay, Steve was before you, I'll get to you in a second, Steve was before you, unless you...
On the last sentence, one-family to two-family dwelling conversions that do not change the footprint of the existing one-family to two-family dwelling, retail electric vehicle charging stations. Now, can we eliminate the word retail?
We just did.
We just did.
And insert for private use, private or employee use only, to clarify...
It's an accessory use, it would be considered an accessory use, but it doesn't say that there, but accessory use would probably be the wording to use with that. But, yeah, we did change it from retail electric vehicle charging station, cross out retail to electric vehicle charging station, and that changes the meaning of the article, which might trigger another public hearing, but the reason we did that is because when the planning board discussed it, retail wasn't involved, it was just a starting point. We didn't allow anywhere in town for vehicle charging stations anywhere. Anyone in town wanting to put one in has to go to the ZBA for variance to get it. So, the planning board, you might have been at some of those meetings there, decided that we'll put in allowable use in the business zone for accessory use, you know, for a business that they want to put it in, but not a retail one. That's why retail was just allowed out there, were not included in our discussions.
Well, I still think that wording to the effect of for private or employee use only...
To clarify it, yeah, I get, yeah, I get.
That could be in the voter guide.
It could be, but he, I think he means it should be in the zoning regulations to clarify what it's intent.
So in 15 years from now, somebody will read it and say, oh, I can't, or I can't.
So, I see your point there, and, yeah, it's a good point, so, electric vehicle charging station as an accessory use, would that fulfill it? Julius?
It would work essentially the same.
Yeah. Any preferred wording from you?
Well, I like the term accessory, primarily because the, one, we have a definitive portion in our ordinance that addresses accessory uses.
And we use it a lot in our ordinance throughout, yeah.
Correct. So I feel like it's important that we say that, but I think that if it's accessory use to the structure, I think it's also fair for businesses to say, I'm renting this out so that other users can come in and use it during the day, and that's still accessory to my building, right? I think you could put an accessory vehicle charging station at a, you could say, a gas station, right? If you place it there, you say it's accessory to your use, people can pull up and drive and charge, and it's all the same, right? So I think that's where, I think we need that terminology, but if you want to depict the difference between commercial and accessory, that needs to be clearly defined, or not one of the two.
Well, how about if we just put in front of the word retail, non? So it would read non-retail electric vehicle charging station. That might clarify it. And leave the accessory out, and there'd be no ambiguity about the accessory use, it doesn't mean non... What was that?
Just have non-retail up with the variables.
Yeah, non-retail vehicle charging station, kind of have to say that, right? That's what we're talking about. Yes?
So, certainly also with the Energy Commission, I'm sure...
Just identify yourself.
The chairman of the Energy Commission, we have two members here as well. So our big concern is just looking towards the future and everything. In all reality, I understand what we're saying, in all reality, though, the only person that's going to come in and put a retail station is probably Tesla with their superchargers. Most everyone else, like Market Basket, they're going to call them accessory use when they put them in, or Gamarlos, but Barbara's concern is what if somebody comes to Gamarlos and says, we want an acre, we want some of your footage here, we want to buy part of your pavement, put in a charging station, according to this, they couldn't do that, so they'd have to work out some kind of deal where it could be an accessory.
But, that's what the, I'll get to you in a second, that's what the variances are for, you know, there isn't, we, the planning board anyways, hasn't seen a large influx of people coming in wanting to set up charging stations. This is just one year of zoning we're talking about. It continues year after year. If the planning board sees a bunch of interest in that type coming in, then we should address it then, was part of the discussion we had when we had this before.
So Tesla came and said, I want to put in a supercharger station, plenty chargers, there isn't a way for them, there is a way for them to do that.
Yeah, you go get a variance, and then you still come before the planning board, cycle plan review. And that's...
But I also, I also noticed that the last, the last amendment change calls for accessory EV charging units in every zoning district.
That's my draft in the previous paper.
Okay.
I think that was something else.
So we're looking, I'm looking at the handout, which is in necessarily... So we're looking, I'm looking at the handout, which is necessarily the same thing you guys are looking at.
No, we're just, we're just looking at the notes and the agenda from going over the zoning. Jane?
Actually, he just said what I had been trying to say.
Repeat it.
And that is, in regard to what Barbara said about putting an, um, charging station at Gamarlos, it would be easy to get a variance for that, because it's a sensible place for it. So he'd have to go through the step of a variance, but that really wouldn't be that big a deal.
That's a very, really a variance if it wasn't, I mean, all they have to do is come in and say it's accessory to our grocery store, and they would get it. They wouldn't have to go there just at that point, right?
Unless they want to put in 50.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if the folks at Gamarlos or Market Basket say, we want to install chargers here as an accessory, there's no issue there.
There might be, because they come in for a site plan review, and if they've got, we'll say, 50 stations there, I think the planning board's going to say, that's an accessory.
That's, that doesn't happen in all reality.
It probably doesn't. Again, to my point, that nobody's coming in asking what they're going to do.
Yeah, but why make it difficult for people to, because if you don't make it as something that they see as a possibility, then no one's going to want to come in if, if there's no-
Not necessarily, we've got a couple apartment houses there that nobody cared for, and they came in and did it anyway. You know, I mean, because it's allowed, but, you know, those things happen. It isn't impossible, that's what variances are for. And again, this is just one year's worth of zoning here. Zoning is perpetual.
Yeah, I guess I really don't understand the resistance, you know?
Well, then, and I don't understand your non-resistance, I guess, so we'll just leave that down.
Well, could you further explain why it's, you're resisting that as an allowable use?
Not necessarily, I'm just, you know, we put it to the voters. If the voters don't want it, then they just vote it down. Planning board's going over it in the public hearing here, and we'll just continue.
But, but voters are going to see, oh, we can have an electric vehicle station here as an accessory use. So they might not think about the fact that they can't have a retail electric station anymore.
Well, they'll think about it when they come into the land use office and ask Julius about it. Then they'll think about it.
If I could get a little bit of clarity, I guess, for the land use office specifically. If, say, one of the multi-family housing developments comes in and would like to put a EV charging station on the property, but they want to charge the residents that utilize the space, is that retail, and would that be allowable or not?
It's a good question, and I suppose it's one that the planning board would address when it comes before the planning board. And then if the planning board decides one way, and the applicant thinks they're wrong, then they go to the ZBA, because we've interpreted our zoning ordinance, and the ZBA decides. And then if they decide wrong, they go to court. And it comes around full circle, go ahead.
Let me, I want to hear what you said again. Is it what you were saying, say, uh, plane view, okay, they put that up, okay? They put charging stations in the back. They charge the residents for the use. That would be a privilege, or if you will, an accessory use by the residents pulling away. So there, to me, that doesn't qualify really as a retail service station. It is a benefit of the, uh, use within that building. Is that kind of what you were saying?
Yeah, that's, that's the clarity, I think that's great for us to know. So the same can work too with businesses as well. If you have a, a business, if W comes in, they put EV charging stations on their lot, as long as it's the employees or maybe the consumers, then it's okay? Is that same interpretation?
I don't, I don't think that the consumer, if you, if you have any, in that situation where you're going to have consumers charging, then it becomes a service station, which is not allowed.
So it's the people that are coming to the lot, that's the cost?
If I'm an employee of, of W, and I have an electric car, and I need to have it charged, then I have, W has given me a ID card or something that I can put in there, so I can charge my car, and then they charge me at the end of the week or at the end of the month for our, to that, to me, that is not a service station. If I'm incorrect, please correct me.
Mr. Jasmine?
So, I mean, for the housing, let's be honest, it's nothing free. If you're charging, you're not charging it because they've got to pay the cost, they're just giving that away. And it's no different than if a, if a, an apartment house had quaint-operated laundry. Well, we don't consider them to be a laundry mat. It's only used by those people, and that's how they pay for it in the business model. So I think that, that it's a bit granular and a little bit of a rabbit hole.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to my earlier comments, um, language to the effect of personal use or employee use only. To clarify is who can use it, how can you use?
Well, yeah, you could, but, you know, again, another rabbit hole, like Mike was just talking about. A lot of, if it just says non-retail, and they end up putting it retail, then Mr. Jasmine, who's just stepped out to go down and say, you know, this is retail, and it's not supposed to be retail, and got to get a variance or whatever you're going to do about it. Rather than for personal use, or so on and so forth, how are you going to prove that one there? That's, I think it's too much, and it, non-retail is a non-retail, in my opinion there. Yes, sir?
Just the one question about when we're talking retail. Are, so we take the, the, they just, they have two chargers going in there. You have to pay to use that charger, you're not getting it for free. As a customer, you have to pay. Is that considered a retail? If Market Basket comes in and puts in two chargers that you have to pay to use, does that make it a retail use?
It would.
Well, then they wouldn't ever put chargers at Market Basket.
They may.
Because they're not going to give it away for free.
They aren't, but by that time, maybe the planning board would have changed it, and it would have gone, or the town would change it, or they'd get a variance for it. Again, if, if there's a large influx of people wanting to put them in, going to the ZBA, ZBA is going to say to the planning board, you know, why don't you guys work on this zoning for next year, because we're getting a lot of people in for this. Zoning, I'm planning for to do it, hearings like we're doing now, and it'll be done.
I think it's just important that folks understand that there is an alternative process. If, if you're worried about installing a charger that you're going to charge people, there is a way to do it.
As there is for anything else that does not go along with our zoning ordinance, that's, that's how you do it.
Do we have any idea how many EVs registered in Swansea?
We don't even need to know the idea.
Well, we need to know what the universe is.
We don't need to know how many EVs are registered in Swansea, because that's not going to tell us how many more are going to be registered next year or next week or whatever.
It's going to tell us what the demand is today.
It's not just people in Swansea that will be using our station, so.
We're, we're looking at it from a planning board standpoint, and that is that so far, no one has come in begging us to put them in, you know. There hasn't been much interest, I'll get to you in a small one. So I think we ought to, we're just putting much into it, just sort of, maybe put non-retail electric vehicle charging station in there and move along. Yes, sir?
I just assume if you're going to apply for a-
Could you just state your name for the-
Chris Langley.
Chris Langley?
Chris Langley.
Chris Langley. Yes, go ahead.
Just assume if you're going to apply for a variance for an EV, uh, charging station, that you're going to have a cap on the amount, whatever the area there, you could have one charging station or whatever. I assume that when you apply for that variance, you'll be able to tell them whether it's non-resident or a resident area, and put a cap on it, because the grid's going to find out anyways in Swansea, where the exact the power's going to that, and what it's costing the Swansea taxway. That way, you guys keep an order of what's going on with these grids.
Probably going to be so regulated to.
That's what I'm saying.
I think I, I think I just missed your point, but I think what you're saying is, well, the planning board looks at that stuff anyway, site plan.
Yeah.
This isn't for residential use, single-family or anything like that. The planning board has no jurisdiction over residential. This is just strictly business, multifamily, things like that. And what you're saying is during site plan review, uh, the planning board would be able to determine how many are going in there, I think is what you're talking about.
Yeah, and you'd be able to regulate it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's generally how it's done. But as it stands right now, anybody, whether it's for non-retail or retail, who wants to put in a charging station, has to go to the ZBA for a variance, because it's not allowed anywhere in the zoning.
Well, I misunderstood what she was saying, where she was talking about the future, you know, putting EV stations into the future and to have the control of that, that, that's where I was confused. I was going to argue, or not argue, discussing.
Yep. So let's get back to that amendment there. Shall it be non-retail electric charging stations, or what Steve suggested, what's your suggestion, Steve?
Personal and/or employee use only.
Personal and/or employee use only. What shall it be? Brandon, what do you think?
Um, either one.
Either one, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
What do you think?
I, I mean, honestly, I, I think either one is pretty self-explanatory, if you want to keep it short, sweet, simple, non-retail.
Yeah.
I'd go for non-retail, it's the simplest way. Richard?
It depends, I think, it depends on how, how restrictive we want to be with it. Steve's suggestion is very much on point as far as what can and cannot. Non-retail is kind of sloppy. But I think, as you, you stated, that where we can come back year after year, if we need to change it to a more specific term, we can do that, but none would get us there, I think.
Victoria?
I'm going for brevity, I think that would get us there.
Jane?
I'm going to abstain.
No, you can't.
I've never heard that before. Well, I'm going to say, I don't think it makes much difference, non-retail, quick, short.
Okay, it looks like non-retail.
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
I live in an apartment. And we have laundry facilities on premises. I have to buy a car to use the washer and the dryer. And put in $20, I can use it for so many washers and dryers. Is that retail?
No. Because someone off, yeah, someone off the street can't do it, you live there, you can do it, but it's someone that... Yes, Mr. Jasmine?
Shouldn't the word tenant be added?
Tenant, no, it shouldn't, because we don't necessarily know if it's going to be in a multifamily or if, it's just strictly for just business zone, which is all the uses in the business zone.
I disagree about the multiple tenants here, for the, how we're adding that possible.
But again, if, if it does get passed, they have to come in in front of the planning board, so for a site plan anyways, modification of site plan, and, and a lot of those issues would be addressed then. So I think we're at a consensus for, we'll put the word non-retail. Non-retail electric vehicle charging station, and especially since that was the intent when we discussed it several meetings prior. Okay, anything else on that? So proposed amendment number 10, amend section five, article C in the zoning ordinance to alter the zoning of Village Business District One parcels located along Main Street into Village Business District Two. Parcels include that of map 109, lots three, eighty-three through eighty-six, twenty-three and twenty-four. Map 108 includes lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, and eighty-seven through ninety-two. Map 110 includes lots forty-five, forty-six, sixty through sixty-eight, and seventy. South of Christian, Christian Hill Road, to the east of Summer Street, includes map 233, lot nineteen. It doesn't mention North Winchester Street, which also is part of that, right? Because let's see here. Because what this is doing is, this is rezoning. It's rezoning, again, like we talked about, currently, Village Business District One is in West Swansea, and these are all the lots they're talking about that encompasses. And again, that's, that side of Main Street, the mill, it's a part of it, in the mill, no, that's two now, but anyways, place over here, Grove Street, and North Winchester Street. So what this is saying is that those lots are going to be rezoned to Village Business Two. And I'm trying to, this is, let me just read through that again, because it's, it's what we're talking about here, but it doesn't really say.
Map 109 is what's along Winchester.
Oh, that's map 109, okay, okay. So just to be clear to the, to the voters reading it and stuff, we need to include, basically, where it is, these map numbers and lot numbers aren't going to mean a whole heck of a lot, but North Winchester Street does, and that one on Grove Street on North, that's already written into the zoning anyways, under its specific lot, so that's already, already included. Now, let's see. Now, let me just read number 11, we're, we're still on number 10, but I'm reading number 11 here. That says amend section five, articles C1 and C2 in zoning ordinance to update uses in Village Business District Two permitted by issuance of a special exception. Okay, the following uses will be permitted. Okay, that has nothing to do with rezoning. The amendment 10 is for the rezoning of that, that area there. Just let me turn to ours on here, because that, it says article C, but I don't think, go ahead.
Should we insert West Swansea in that, somewhere along there, just to define? Most, most people know what the streets are and stuff and where they're located, but just to-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an objection to it, because it does clarify for, again, this is a, to help the voters understand what the heck is going on there. So I wouldn't have an objection to that. Section five, article C is... So yes, section five, article C is the Village Business District Two, that is article C.
We're actually changing those uses from permitted by right to permitted only by special exception.
Yeah, I was just reading through that one, we're going to get to that one in a minute. I was just reading through that one just to see if it pertained anything to number 10, because kind of have to clarify number 10, that again, it's just another rezone article. What we're doing is, let's see, is that it's saying that Village Business Two contains all of these lots and, and map numbers, basically is what that is saying. I'm just trying to see how we could change that a bit to ordinance, how may, uh, section five, article C in the zoning ordinance to rezone Village Business, that's what it should say, okay. Amend section five, article C. No, because C is Business Two. I guess to include, because if it doesn't go through, it'd still be other uses. So how do we do that? Amend section five, article C in the zoning ordinance to include, let's see. We don't need the include zoning of Village Business One, we don't need that. So cross that out, so to include parcels located along Main Street, okay, that flows a little bit better. Amend, okay, what's one of the, amend section five, article C, sorry, repeat all this. Article C in the zoning ordinance to include parcels located along Main Street in West, West Swansea into Village Business District Two. Yeah, that does it. Parcels include that of map 109, lots three, eighty-three through eighty-six, twenty-three and twenty-four. Map 108 includes lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and eighty-seven through ninety-two. Map 110 includes lots forty-five, forty-six, sixty through sixty-eight, and seventy. South of Christian Hill Road, to the east of Summer Street, includes map 233, lot nineteen. Okay, I think that clarifies it. Did you get that, Beverly, that it's just the beginning part of it, that, just to clarify what it is?
I have.
Shall I, want me to read through it again?
To rezone to include parcels located along Main Street in West Swansea, Village District Two. And I just have, I don't know, it's red, they're listing them all, do you want them all listed, all?
Um, I'm, I'm just putting, I think we ought to have it, that-
In minutes? Do we need a minute?
I'm, I'm contemplating whether we're saying rezone or include, because it's-
Well, specific lots to be rezoned, to include parcels along?
It's going to be, if it goes through, it would be a rezoning of, of Main Street here, but we've already mentioned that before, but we're, this is a, an amendment of section five, article C. Section five, article C is Village Business District. So if we're talking about that, in the zoning ordinance, if we're talking about that, amend section five, article C in the zoning ordinance to include, because we already have a Business Two in there. So we want it to include the parcels located along Main Street, West Swansea, into Village Business District Two, and all those lot numbers there. Because if it doesn't go through, we still have some of down here by the mill, which is in Village Business Two. So that would have to stay that way. So we'd have to, I think, have to say include. Yes?
Once again- Once again, parcels include that map of 109 lots 83, 3, 83 through 86, 23 and 24. Through or through and including?
It'd be including, so we could add the word including in there.
And the same thing with the next sentence.
Again, right, with the, what we're doing here is just clarifying that. Through 60, through and including 68 is what you're talking about, too.
Yeah, so it's to add.
Yeah.
And then the same thing on the next sentence.
Through and including, yeah. Through and including 87, through and including 92. So we'll put through and including, we'll put including after every place that says through.
Sounds like you're...
How's that?
Sounds like you're...
Okay. Oh, yes, sir. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, Jay Wolt. I live on North Winchester Street. Just a small break from here. On the map 108, it says 87 through 92. That does belong with map 109.
Would you repeat that? Didn't hear you said map 108, right?
Lots 87 through 92 on map 108. Those actually belong with map 109. I only know that because that's where I live.
Okay. All right. And, I didn't get your name. Were we to get your name for the record?
Oh, Jay Wolt.
Jay Wolt?
Wolt.
Wolt, Jay Wolt.
And his comment?
Lives on Winchester Street. And his comment was that lots 87 and 92, was it?
Through 92.
87 through 92 actually belong with map 108?
109.
Actually belong with map 109?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. By getting back to the through, the through word, through, we're going to put through and including after, after all of them. Right, just to make sure. Barbara?
Yes, so just to clarify, so right now, the mill is District 2, right?
Yeah.
And so we are making all of West Swansea, well, not all, but we're going to combine the districts into one district. They'll all be District 2.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm looking at the map, and I don't see, with the map that's handed out here today, I don't see Swansea Street on here, but on our zoning map, Swansea Street is part of the Village District.
Swansea Street is. Now, that's the one we're talking about, goes right behind the mill, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. And that's not in there? Oh, you, he must have a...
Well, it's not on this map, that number.
Okay. But again, that's another reason why we're adding lots and lot numbers and that type of thing, rather than, rather than just say things on it, because it identifies it specifically. Okay, he's getting to the layers on it now.
So you can see how it goes around the mall?
I see, that's the blue.
So the only one that we, and I remember from the...
It's just a street.
The option to remove, this parcel in this right here only goes along the roadway, and that's because of the way the layer was overlaid, did not actually touch any of these parcels, thus they, really, the roads, whatever, it's affected. Why it's important to say specifically what parcels are included. So if we would like to extend it, we could include these lots over here, but I play the playbook, the lots may often choose that, take that out, if I remember correctly.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so they, they never were a part of the district, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And they might, the odd part about this is that, like this corner lot here, something in the audience that had that lot, it's cut partially through it, but the majority of it is within the residential lot. So that's why we opted to choose that as a residence district rather than what is district here.
Yes.
And one other question. Along the Schuylkill Street, now you have extended the Village District all the way to where it is Maple. Right now, it's half residential and half Village District, and I just wonder what the rationale is for extending that.
Did we? It was, did we end up doing that or not?
Well, again, just the minute they hand out.
Yep.
They hand out, it's like the one all the way to the corner, you know, the Schuylkill and Maple.
I think when we're, we're looking at this, because this, this is the one right now, and it like went through those lots, what we're talking about is going this way, right there. Just including that entire lot, not all the way to Maple Street.
Okay, now while I'm talking about...
If that's on the map, I know, but...
This.
Are you talking about this right here?
Yeah, this right here.
That's, that's one whole lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's one. Okay.
So that's only four lots, I don't know the fifth one. I don't know the fifth thing.
The effect that we're doing is cleaning up split lots in terms of...
And then, yeah, when it, it'll just come to the end of those lots, not all the way down to Maple Street, though, like, except the other one is one whole lot, like, just that.
Cleaning up split lots.
Yeah.
But it's also doing, in case people are curious as well, is you'll notice that there are lots that, it doesn't perfectly align with all of them, right? So like this lot is cut to pieces, and so all that does is make it extremely difficult for people to utilize their land, because certain areas are allowed, you're allowed to do certain things. So that's why it's clarifying the connection. The same thing's happening in West Swansea as well, this side here, I guess people will see that after.
Yep. So are we good with amendment 10 about the rezoning? So what would end up, actually, if it's passed, all that's in light blue now would be that purple, which designates Village Business 2. Okay. Nothing else on that 10? Okay. Amendment number 11, amendment, I mean amend section 5, article C1 and C2 in zoning ordinance to update uses in Village Business District 2 permitted by issuance of a special exception. The, this, or the following uses will be permitted by spec, special exception. It is manufacturing facility, research and testing, laboratories, utility generation, wholesale, warehouse or storage facilities with office, repair, and customer service areas. These uses here were allowed outright in that Business 2. So the planning board, with changing Business 2 to this area of town here, is proposing that those uses be moved to a special exception, which is a little bit more of a step to do to utilize a piece of land with those uses on it. That's why it's like that. Right now, like I say, it's a, it's a current use. You can use it that way. If this goes through, it'll be a special exception, just move to that category. I think that explains it. Okay. Any questions on that one there, please? Yes, sir, just, your name, just for the minutes, please?
David. A question about that use by special exception, does that allow the landlords in the area when these are being reviewed to speak into it?
It does. It allows them to speak to it first with the zoning board of adjustment, because they will issue a special exception, or won't, one or the other. And if it does get a special exception, then to the planning board, when the planning board reviews it as a site plan. So twice in that case.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, I think number 11, that was it. So...
Hey, that says 12, I'm sorry, guys. Last one.
So...
So that was when, you know, we were talking about EV charging, that was when that was included. I attempted to bring this number 12 to the planning board at the last public hearing, and so, I'm sorry, the last meeting of the planning board. So that's why this is, that was there.
So there is...
There is what directly to that, so that's right. This was important, amendment number 9, or what's said on the best of number 9.
Which we're finished with.
Which we're finished with. We...
So, oh, I'm so confused, I wish we didn't have that.
What is it, Barbara?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We thought it was another amendment, because...
And what does it say the amendment is?
The amendment says that electric vehicle charging stations are permitted in every zoning district.
As accessory.
When accessory to the primary intended use.
That's that letter, right?
Well, I think, but our letter gives a different...
No, it's not that. Okay. Okay, so, so yeah, those, they had never been discussed like that. We discussed EV stations, but we decided to put it in the business, as a use permitted in the business zone for this particular, I guess, change in zoning, or proposed change in zoning. Those uses like that, the planning board did not discuss and agree upon at any of the meetings that we're at. That was, this was not part of the discussion. It was these zoning amendments here. We had a few more zoning amendments, but we tried to keep them down to a minimum, sort of a minimum there. But they were not discussed, so that's why they are not here at the public hearing.
Okay.
The origins of that is that at the Energy Commission, we had discussed the idea, so I asked to put it onto the board at the last planning board meeting, to let it discuss. We didn't have a formal meeting. And so that's why this kind of hasn't, because that wasn't even at the last planning board meeting. And so let it come to the law, that's why we included this versus this particular discussion. That's why we created the letter, the Energy Commission, to bring it to this meeting, so that we could say, we know you weren't able to discuss it in another hearing, so we should public hearing with that. And that's the order.
So, but right now, the public hearing, there's no public hearing. I mean, we were just saying that we would like to see it as a committed use throughout all districts, but...
The public hearing that we're in right now just pertains to these 11 amendments that we had been discussing for weeks prior to this. So Julius, when is the time up for zoning amendments to be placed by petition? Or is that already passed?
Yes, the petition ones have already passed for review.
Okay.
So it's too late for that.
It's too late for that.
But that doesn't mean that, say, as you know, if the planning board were to host a second public hearing on this, we have the first meeting in January, that we can still hold a second hearing if we feel so necessary.
Okay.
So you're saying that today, they could accept this amendment, I mean, was listed as 12?
Correct.
And then have a second public hearing on it in January?
Correct.
We'll have to have a, one, at least one meeting of the planning board prior to that public hearing, discussing another zoning amendment to go before the voters. It can't just be brought up at the public hearing and be done that way. It has to be brought up at the planning board, discussed with public, duly on a meeting, and then brought to a public hearing.
So can we bring it to you today?
Probably not. Not right now. At this meeting, you can bring it to Julius over at the land use office there, bring it like that. But tonight, we're doing just what's on the agenda, which is this, these 11 items here. It wasn't on the agenda, because the planning board didn't vote it to be on the agenda. The planning board had several meetings on zoning over the course of the last few months, and these 11 items were voted to be on to the hearing for the agenda for this hearing.
So just, I just want to be clear that as Energy Commission, we're just concerned that the planning board is aware that EV charging is going to be more prevalent in the future, but it sounds like what you're telling us is there are ways to make these things happen, just not totally simple ways.
Which we discussed as, you know, as the planning board was discussing this whole thing about EV, and that's how that got on, this, whichever amendment it is, that's how it got on there, is we discussed EV stations and where they should be, where they shouldn't be. And throughout that discussion, it was brought that so far, there hasn't been anyone wanting to put them in yet, and there is also, always, the variance, which you can go through, it's an extra step, but you can go through it anyways, and if you get the approval, then that's fine. And it still is, that's the way all the time. And again, next year, if it comes up and it gets put on, gets voted on by the voters, then it will be allowed to be used in whatever district it's allowing or isn't allowing.
So that would be something maybe we could work on with you guys, just going forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next year.
Next year, but, you know, if somebody like Telsa you're talking about comes in, they just go to the ZBA? That's, that's what they're there for. So any more discussion on the 11 zoning amendments we had tonight? Because I'm going to close the public hearing, and once that's closed, we won't take any more testimony about the zoning amendments. The planning board is going to deliberate and take a vote on it. So it's now or never.
Okay. So...
I just wanted to just make a statement. You know, out of these 11 or 10 amendments, you know, I was involved with all of them. I do want to commend the board on being receptive to our proposal, and certainly through the collaborative process to refine that to where it is today. So we do appreciate that.
We thank you for that. We appreciate hearing that, because we've heard a lot of things that weren't so nice.
I say that outside.
Okay. So again, no more from the public, right? Because I'm going to close the public hearing. I will be no more testimony for that. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. So, planning board, we can take all of these amendments and vote on them all at the same time, or anybody has a problem with them, we could take one off. I'm suggesting that...
I'll make a motion, and we'll take them all at once.
Okay, so, so, motion by Michael York to put all the zoning amendments, all 11 zoning amendments on the ballot, ballot for 2024. Is that your motion?
Yeah, you can.
And just a second, we have a second, Brandon's seconding it, okay.
As edited.
As edited. Thank you, yes, as edited, because that's right. We're going to clarify some of those paragraphs there to read a little bit clearly. It's not going to change the meaning of it. If it did, we couldn't do this, but we're just going to clarify it, and we'll do it before next meeting, just in case anybody has an objection to what's in the wording there. But for now, we'll take a vote to put these on the warrant for 2024. So all those in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Okay, so we've moved on from that.
Mr. Chairman, can I have just a minute to address the call?
You may.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming forward. This is your town as well as our town. We love the participation that we've got. We need to hear from you, what you want, how you want to develop your town. Now, I also want to inform you, I track legislation very closely with Constellations. There is a new bill coming out that's a remake of the old bill we defeated last year, HB44. This new bill is even worse, it's 1291. What it says is you can take in the residential area, four houses on a one-acre lot, okay, which is going to increase your density tremendously. And the last, the last one was it had to be on public water and sewage. This one doesn't, as long as you have ample water supply, and as long as the subject system that's present can handle the flow according to the state, then you can build there.
So what is that, the number of that?
HB1291.
And you're informing the publics to...
To whatever your feelings on it, however you feel about it, you should contact your legislator and let them know how you feel.
Who's the pro responsible?
I don't know who the sponsor is. I didn't get that far into it today. I just got this notice from the legislator today. To me, it really doesn't matter who the sponsor is, I don't like to know.
Contact the sponsor.
HB what?
I wrote, I wrote a letter to every legislator in the thing.
1291.
1291.
That's statewide.
Yes, that would be a state law, and it was, it would be a law that says, we could write a zoning amendment addressing it, but it wouldn't matter much, because it's a state
Okay. Moving to our next item, which is item B. This is planning board number 23-027. That's a boundary line adjustment.
Did we vote on that as a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, we did. You shouldn't, though, thank you.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I know.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's a Divinardo Associates LLC. On behalf of Robjohn LLC, request review of a boundary line adjustment for properties located along Base Hill Road. Subject properties are currently shown at tax map 203 lots 23, uh, 22 and 23 in the Business District. So that must be you.
Yeah, yeah, for the record, I'm Joe Divinardo from Divinardo Associates.
Okay, Joe, and we, it has it noted as a public hearing, so let's just open up the public hearing officially.
Okay.
And have a look, see what you have.
Yeah. I appreciate you. We're ready at the time that the application is submitted, so I can pass these out.
Okay. Slide run up this way, we'll share at this end of the table here. You have only one more for, or one for yourself.
Do you want me to start the presentation?
Um, everybody ready for the presentation? Yeah, just give us a brief synopsis of what you're doing here.
Sure.
Just point it out on the map so we can see.
Yep, we're working for Robjohn LLC.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. DiVonardo, do you spell that with a D I or a D E?
D I.
D I, that's what I thought, it was wrong.
Yep. So the property, Robjohn owns two properties on Base Hill Road. It's map 52 lot 18 and map 52 lot 19. They, the gist of what happened is they put a shed in a well on lot 19, and they wanted it to be on lot 18 because that's their operation business.
Oh, I see, that little corner right there, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, it's crosshatched.
Yep.
So the dash line, you can see there's an arrow, says former property line. That dash line is the existing boundary, so that the lot was, you know, kind of came in and squared off. So now what we're proposing to do is do, is jog around the shed and the well to add that to the bigger parcel lot 18, which is the Arlington paving, um, business.
That's Arlington paving right there, that lot 18?
Yeah, that's, that's the business right there, yeah.
So that'll add it to them right at the corner there, so you're cutting out that corner from lot 19 and putting it over to lot 18?
Right, and then we had to steal a little sliver right off of Base Hill Road, right here, off of lot 18, to make it conforming to the minimum lot size of one acre. So we stole that from the...
That would be right here, annexed from, yeah, annexed, to be annexed right there, so you just move that to here. I got you, dash line is the original one, you've got the pin coming here to add to here. And it was, oh yeah, because that was only one acre. Yeah, I see what you're doing there. Pull that from there, so that doesn't hurt those guys at all, frontage wise, doesn't hurt this. Down in here, down about there somewhere.
It's confusing because it's, it's the two numbering systems, right? So on our new map, it's lot... In our new numbers, it's...
It would be, yeah. Let's see, is one inch equal 50 feet, is that what you're at right there? I'm looking to see what you've left for setback here, if you've got 30 feet or not.
So the setback is on there, we show that dash line coming in.
On the shed there?
Yeah, comes right through the well. See that line that goes right through the well? And it runs right along there to the shed, and then it comes and heads north right along the shed, up to where that Z is.
You're talking about this line here?
Yeah.
That's the well, talking about that line.
Those are the, that's a setback line type.
Yeah.
So...
Is this the scale, can I measure all that?
That runs right, yep, you can measure that, that's, that's...
But the setback, I'm talking about is setback there and a setback there, not here.
Right, it's coming in to the corner of the shed, right, right off the shed, and then it comes to the north.
This distance right here?
Yep.
Is what?
It's the 20 feet.
Oh, you've got 20 feet there?
Yeah, 20 feet on both sides.
I'm sure you did, because you surveyed it right.
50 feet, 10 feet. 600 square feet. And also, he said he was fully funded.
Also, if he doesn't have it, he'll move the shed there?
But, but he also doesn't, because of the square footage of the shed.
Okay.
Yes.
Then never mind, okay.
The wall radius has been impacted by DiVonardo.
Uh, no, because all the buildings are further north, you might need 75 feet, and then the house would add.
Everybody see what's going on right here?
Yeah.
Adding that in there, and taking that out of there. It's pretty straightforward, reasoning is straightforward.
Did the new mapping prompt this?
No, that shed did.
No, they drilled the well on the wrong bars.
Okay, is anybody from the public here on this? This is the Base Hill Lot Line Adjustment. Nope. Okay, any questions from the boards or the applicant? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. No objections, and the public hearing is closed. And again, it's... No, we don't, we don't do that.
Except in the...
I know, and we normally don't have a public hearing here. We just usually have a regular speaking, but it's a public hearing, so we should have a public hearing. So, again, it's pretty, laid out pretty straightforward. Surveyor, stamp is on there, north, everything looks good, so if there are no objections, then a motion to approve the lot line adjustment would be in order?
I'll make the motion, then we approve it.
Okay, a motion by Brandon to approve the lot line adjustment for Base Hill Road. Is there a second? Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
All set?
Yep, you're approved. Bring it, yep, to the land use office and we'll get it signed and then...
Perfect, thank you very much. You can have them, do you want them all? Not taken? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, our next item, item C, planning board number 23-029. That's another boundary line adjustment. Fieldstone Land Consultants, on behalf of Benjamin Steiner, Clyde L. Keen Jr., and Carol Cooper, request a boundary line adjustment at properties located along Westport Village Road. Subject properties are currently shown at tax map 246, lot 73 and 74, in the residential district. And, see, I thought I saw him in here. Is he here? He isn't here, or he's not here for this, is he? I thought I saw him come in earlier in the meeting, maybe not. Was that, was that Bergeron that was here for this one?
You mean Brandon?
No, 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 I meant, I thought it was...
Westport Village should be Chad.
Oh, is Chad doing this? Oh, it's Fieldstone. Oh, okay, yes, so no, he isn't here. So we'll skip over that one. Item D, planning board number 23-020, site plan review. This is continued from September 14th, 2023. That's Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of All Purpose Storage Swansea West LLC, request site plan review for construction of a multi-tenant services facility to be leased to various service businesses at 115 Base Hill Road. Property is currently shown at tax map 52 lot 16 in the rural ag district and business district. So as probably everyone knows, the zoning board of adjustment, we're waiting for the zoning board, or board of adjustment to decide whether the planning board erred or not in, in saying that service businesses are allowed in the business district. That's what we're, we've all been waiting for. So the ZBA met on Monday night, I was there, Richard was there too, I think.
Sitting beside him.
Yeah, that's right, you were, yeah. Well, you're hard to admit. So what the ZBA did was they only had a quorum there, they had four people there, so they allowed the applicant to decide whether or not they wanted a full board to decide on their issue or not, and the applicant said, yes, they wanted a full board. So now it's, it's been continued, actually, they didn't even open it up, but I guess you would call it continued, until their meeting, I'm not sure, was it 15th of January?
So actually, you're exactly right, I mean, that's gone, so they actually chose to change it to what would be the 8th of January.
Okay, they moved it up, okay.
And there will be a renotice for this hearing as well.
For this one, for our board?
Not for ours, but for, for the ZBA.
Okay.
So they will have to renotice this one. So it was supposed to be the 15th, is now the 8th.
They're, they're going to hear it on the 8th, and hopefully they'll have enough people here to, to hear the whole thing. Yeah, are we meeting on the, I think we are meeting on the 11th, aren't we? Yeah, the 11th, okay, so, so we'll need a motion to continue this, planning board number 23-020, continue it until January 11th without further notice.
So...
I'll second it.
Motion by Richard to that effect, seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
What was the date again?
The 11th, January 11th.
Don't take as fast as you can speak.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I need to slow down, right?
I, I think we should also include as well that we have reached the end of our 90-day clock for making a decision on this project.
Yep.
So we cannot continue this hearing. They have to ask for that extension, and I did give a request from Chad to extend it until the 11th of August.
Okay.
So just, just sort of...
If they don't, if they don't, right, extend there the timeframe, which I'm sure they will, but if they don't, then it'll still be scheduled for the public anyways for that meeting, and then it'll have to be canceled.
And we have to make a decision on the 11th ourselves?
We don't have to.
As long as he wants to, and I script.
It all depends.
You know what I meant, yeah, buddy.
I know what you meant, all right, okay. So let's see. Item number E, which is planning board number 23-028, that's a...
Did you have your vote on the motion?
Oh, no, I didn't, oh, sorry about that, that's right. Oh, no, we did have the vote, yeah, we did have the, yeah, it was all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item E, which is planning board number 23-028, multi-tenant application. DSM Realty and the New Hampshire Liquor Commission request multi-tenant review for operation of a retail sales liquor outlet at the existing commercial building located at 11 West Swansea Road. Subject property is currently shown at tax map 204 lot 4 in the commercial industrial district. So, I think that must be you.
Yep. Left at the office, trying to borrow a chair here.
Um, may I have your name for the record, please?
So, good evening, for the record, my name is Tom Burns, I'm a senior project manager at TF Moran. Um, we're the civil engineering consultants that work...
Burns, thank you so much.
We're a civil engineering firm in Bedford, we're in, we're the consultants that work with DSM Realty Market Basket on a number of their New Hampshire locations. So the application that's before you this evening is to propose a multi-tenant change of use for an existing retail unit that's adjacent to the Market Basket site.
And I'm just going to hold you up right there, because this is going to be a public hearing, so I'll just, before I get started there, we're just going to open up the public hearing, and you can continue.
All right.
Okay, the public hearing is officially over. Thank you.
Okay. So again, the, the application that's before the board this evening is for a multi-tenant change of use for the existing retail unit that's adjacent to the current Market Basket facility. This is approximately 19,000 square feet of retail, this was formerly a Sears, um, home, home use that was in here, it's been vacant for a couple of years. We were before the board with a site plan application in September for landscape review, and then for administrative approval in October, to do some improvements to the site adjacent to this location, and that would be to pave the gravel parking area now, and to pave the existing access drive out here now. And so the application this evening is for architecture, for the building, and for the tenant change. So the applicant is proposing to lease the space to State Liquor Commission for a liquor, a liquor retail store, similar to what they do in a number of the Market Basket locations throughout the state, as well as in other retail plazas. To give you a better idea of what it looks like. So what they're, what they're proposing is kind of consistent with their, with their branding and their identity in the state and the number of their locations, is a similar look to the building, they would do an interior retrofit to suit their, the retail use, and then this would be the exterior improvements that they're proposing to the building, so via clapboard siding with a timber frame for the canopy over the, the entranceway. The building, again, would occupy the existing retail space that was, that was in there, so no increase in the footprint of it, just reusing what's there now. They estimate that they would have about 25 employees that would be at this facility at the site, and they expected no more than 10 per shift that would be in here. They would norm, they would, they would expect that they're going to operate during what their, kind of their normal business hours are for the liquor stores. It varies from site to site, but the majority of their stores, they, they run somewhere around 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then Sundays are typically, they say that they're typically 10 to 5. Some locations, they have slightly different hours, but that's, that's generally how they've operated throughout the state with their sites. They expect at this site, this location, they're estimating about 800 customers per day could come through the site. That would be a mix of people coming directly to here, as well as people that are already coming to the site from Market Basket, that would then visit the site as well.
That's combined, you mean that's combined with Market Basket and this new use, or this is above and beyond what's coming to Market Basket now?
So it would be what's typically generated for this use, but when we look at it in terms of, in terms of traffic, and when you have a multi-tenant plaza, there's always a certain amount of internal capture, and that can be, it can vary depending upon uses. We see some of them that it's 20% of is overlap of other customers, some of it's up to 50% of overlap, it all depends, and that's, and that's why they tend to target going to plazas like this and working with, with groups like Market Basket, because they see a lot of overlap in customer base, so that's why it's a great location for them to come into, because they'll, they'll end up sharing a customer base. We did submit a traffic, a traffic analysis and a traffic memo to Julius and to the planning department for this. We generally estimate, over what was previously approved for the site, and over what was here with the previous retail use, we'd estimate about 88 new trips in a peak hour, so it's, it's one to two trips per, per minute additional to the site coming in and out. And that was in line with the numbers they gave us. So we did, we did our trip analysis, the traffic, traffic engineer reviewed based off of ITE, what, what they would estimate for this use, what would come in for trips, and then we subsequently got the estimates from Market, from the Liquor Commission for what they estimated for trips, and they're well within line with what we estimate. If anything, we're conservative of our numbers, because they're estimating approximately 70 customers an hour roughly, and we carried up to like 150 in our numbers to, to generate how many trips we got, so we're actually pretty conservative of our numbers. But overall, it's not going to, we're not proposing any changes to the intersection, to the entrances relative to this, we don't expect any impact, again, it's, you know, it's one to two cars per, per cycle or per minute out there, so it's, that's during a peak hour, and, and so it's, it's not really going to have much of an impact on the site of what's, what's there today.
And you're figuring, with the new parking area to the left right there?
Yeah.
That's going to be primarily for...
We, yeah, we would anticipate it's primarily...
Employees park there now, don't they?
Yeah, they use it for employee parking, but they have extra, they have, they have ample parking on the site, I think they've just been using it out of convenience.
Ah, yeah, they have a lot behind the store here, too, right?
Yes, they do.
A lot of parking back there.
Yeah, the, originally, when the plan, in 2009, when the site plan was done, that area where the parking was, there was going to be an additional standalone building that was approved there.
Yeah, I remember that.
And then in 2011, we came back before the board, and we proposed to eliminate that sin, that standalone building, which was going to be a pharmacy, and then it was proposed to be two buildings, so it was going to be a retail building and a bank. And it, and the parking that we're proposing to pave, it's basically, they took the improvements that were shown on that plan in 2011, and they said, okay, we're going to construct the, that's over the gravel now, we're going to construct that parking, and that was what we came in, in the fall with the proposal for. They had, back in 2011, what they did was they brought the parking area and the, the southerly access, it's an exit only, right, right turnout only, they brought that up to gravel subgrade. And one of the conditions of approval was that they weren't going to build the new buildings out there until they, until when and if they could find a tenant for those buildings, and to date, they never found somebody that was interested in taking those out parcels and building those standalone buildings. So they've been using the parking, and they decided they were going to pave the parking, and in the meantime, while they were looking at doing that, they were talking with the Liquor Commission, and they were interested in taking this, so it kind of works out that they'll end up likely utilizing that parking, or maybe a mix of some of the employees will still park there, and then customer parking, but they don't, there's no concern for parking on the site, because they have more than enough uses.
Yeah, there was a lot of parking there.
Yes.
And deliveries out back, you know, you can go all the way around that building out back, all the deliveries are going to be out back?
Correct, it'll continue to be out back, yeah, the, yes, and part of the, part of the plans, and I did bring the, the site plans from the fall, I don't know if you can show, but on this, actually, you can see it actually on the aerial as well. So this is the delivery area here, the loading areas, and they're going to continue to utilize that for the back of the building. So this will be where that, where that entrance is, where you see the timber, it'll be right on the corner here.
That's the area, that's where I'm worried about this, frankly, and I'm a frequent shopper at Market Basket, okay, I'm there multiple times a week. And that corner, where we're sort of trained to sort of stop, you know, before we go out onto...
Yes.
The highway, that's, it's, it's a really, I'm, I'm concerned about circulation, okay, on the lot, and my first thought is, would you entertain the idea of having the entrance face the, what's currently the gravel parking area?[1794.87] So that that would encourage people who are going exclusively to the liquor store to park on the-
So would their-
To the left.
So the site is, the, the improvements that were approved back in October included a new pedestrian crossing through here with signage and baller, well, they have, they're gonna have the, the parking over here, they had, the crosswalks were proposed through here. The, I mean, the intent would be to have the, to have the entrance facing the roadway because that's gonna be the visibility. They're not proposing any, any stand, any freestanding signage or anything out to the road to inform passersby that, that the liquor store's gonna be here. So the idea would be that's, that's where the branding and that's where the, the frontage would face.
Yeah, I can't, I just, can we think outside of the box for a second though, I'm just, Market Basket is busier by the week, you know? I mean, it's, it's a really, really busy place, okay, don't you experience that?
It's getting busier with the new apartment closures.
Yeah, yeah, so it's already a pretty, there's a fair amount of pandemonium going on there, which I consider to be true. But, you know, if, if we could encourage the people who are shopping there at the liquor store to, to not sort of add to the parking that's direct, everybody wants to park as close as possible to the door where they're going, right? I mean, don't you experience that?
They're gonna park wherever they want, like they do it now, you know? That store isn't being used at all and that parking lot is, is used in front of that store there.
Exactly, so what I'm saying is if we could encourage them to just keep on driving straight and park along the other face of the-
Entrance or no entrance, I don't know that they have room to put that entrance on that left side of that building there, but entrance or no entrance, people are still gonna park anywhere they want.
People don't park, they're just a bend in the corner.
Excuse me?
People don't park, they're just a bend in the corner.
But I think there's, there's a fair amount of visibility there, you know, when you come out, I know the space you mean, space you mean where you're supposed to stop there, you really aren't looking to the right, there's never anything coming that way.
Right, we're not trained to do that.
But I know, there might be, I don't know, something crossing your yield or something you could put there.
Like the signs like they have in Keene, the traffic only goes one way, but they say, look to your left or look to your right at the crosswalk, like you don't know enough.
In that, in that light, is there any way in that parking area parallel to the building, this new one here, of exiting only off your more southerly part, yes, coming out that-
Coming out through here?
Yeah, or just, you know, somehow coming out without going back through the existing intersection. I think that's what Victoria's trying to-
Well, some people, they need to use any intersection, right? Because some people are gonna go to Keene, yeah, you can't take a left.
I'm just saying, we're concerned about the extra vehicle coming through the liquor store parking lot. If you made it a loop, you can only go, exit one direction, going west and then coming east, not coming through that existing intersection that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think you lost me, yeah, find out what you're talking about.
If we, yeah, because my concern would be if we restrict internal movements, then-
Yeah, if we, from this parking lot here, came this way, or only exited like this, you take away her concerns about the intersection here. So I mean, if you come in like this, come into the parking area and, but only exit out that-
Well, you have to take a right every time, no, it's not gonna-
Well, that's existing now, but we're talking about putting a rotary in there too.
I don't think that's gonna-
Making a left out of that, like he's proposing, if you're gonna make a left out of that, you're a traffic, traffic hours, you're gonna be sitting there a while because there's no light there, the light's up the road.
That's gotta be right only, like they've had it, they've had it right only-
Yeah, it's gotta be right only.
And, and right the other intersection with the light in it is the way to get out of there.
So-
I mean, we are, and we are proposing, I mean, we, we do have signage and stop bars proposed in here, that was part of the plan that, that was submitted previously, was to control that intersection. I just, I, it's hard for me to justify to them that we would restrict internal movement on the site or restrict an entrance location.
How about, I'm concerned about how the car, I think it's gonna be very congested for traffic in, at that, at that intersection, but I'm also concerned about people, okay, because we're trained, you know, to look for people back where they're exiting the grocery store, but there's gonna be a lot of people like coming out of that store and, you know, as pedestrians going into the parking lot, parking area that's directly in front of them. So, just, I'm just saying, it's, that's a really busy place.
It's set up pretty well though, you know, what else are they gonna do? Yeah, there are pedestrians around there and there are around Market Basket now, and there has been a storm there prior to that, Sears was in there.
Yeah, but Sears was a quiet place compared to a state liquor store.
People have to take responsibility too, pedestrians and the people driving there for, for what they're doing, you know? Not just barreling through there and hitting somebody, yep, somebody might get hit, right, you're looking at me like that, but still, there is a certain amount of responsibility people have. The layout, to me anyways, the layout is there, has been there, and it works. It's, there's plenty of room for pedestrians to walk and they do have several crosswalks in there that pedestrians go through and-
Is there a crosswalk indicated where you leave the state liquor store?
We're proposing, we're proposing a crosswalk, there's a crosswalk here, there's a crosswalk in front of it as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, any other news on this? Anybody from the public on this, Market Basket? Nope, nobody? Then, Steve.
Can you put in a second crosswalk, kind of like in the middle of where the building would be?
It is, it's right there.
Further up, further up.
Up in here?
Yeah.
Oh, back there. Nobody's gonna be walking back there, yeah, that's where all the- The entrance is in the front there.
Yeah, you've got parking back there and people-
But he's got a crosswalk right there.
Some people may-
Alright, you're shut off.
There's just landscaping on that curb, there's no sidewalk going to the west.
Well, there's no comments from the public, I'm going to, any more questions for the applicant? Because I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Is this a conclusion, is this a conclusion of the application or we're skipping that phase?
We're skipping that, there's no, yeah, application, no.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is just the closing of the public hearing.
Okay.
Again, a multi-tenant application. So. I don't know of anything we can do with the, as far as the traffic goes through-
I can't really approve, you just say, okay.
Well, no, we, we can, it's, it's a building that's there, it's been there, it's been used as a business. And to not approve it because of traffic issues of sight through there makes you wonder why the planning board approved the other business application.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm not objecting to the use or anything like that, I'm just saying heads up because if there's anything you can do to, you know, help people be safe in that parking area-
Traffic signs, is that they're gonna put traffic signs up there?
Yeah, just, just be aware, I mean, maybe spend a day sitting there watching what happens, you know, it's a busy place. And people come from far away to shop at that store and they don't, they're not necessarily frequent flyers like, you know, all of us in this room. So, it's, that's just a tricky corner, I'm just saying, so please be advised, you know?
When you're driving there, you have to have your head on a swivel because people come out of the stores, they don't look.
No kidding, yeah, they sure do.
So that's why as drivers, we have to be extra cautious.
Yep, and as you should be, driving that car around there like that, especially your truck.
Bam!
It looks like a pretty good addition to Market Basket up there. Anybody have any objections to that going in there, other than safety, I don't know, they're pretty straightforward, so. A motion to approve the multi-tenant-
Closing the plug, huh?
Alright, I did, yeah. I make the motion that we approve. Motion by Brandon to approve the multi-tenant, seconded by Michael York, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck to you. Okay, now. We are to item number F, which is planning board number 23-030, that's a multi-tenant application. Ryan McCormick, on behalf of Swansea Homestead Offices LLC, requests a multi-tenant review for operation of a professional office space at the existing commercial building at 217 Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is currently shown at tax map 105 lot one in the Business District. And, that would be you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we had, we had just a multi-tenant, so it says public hearing, so we're gonna have a public hearing and we're gonna open up the public hearing. Public hearing is open. So, yes, sir?
Well, proposing to, uh-
Your name, sir?
The third floor of-
Your name, please?
Brian McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
Proposing to run the, the third floor, the floor of the Swansea Homestead Office for a radio station, our main studios.
Be broadcasting out of there?
Broadcast, 104.9 FM, WYLY radio.
Is that over the internet or antenna?
No, it's over the airwaves.
Really?
104.9 on your FM dial.
I mean, broadcasting from there with an antenna or?
The main studios are located there, the city of license is in Hinsdale, that's where the tower is.
Okay.
We're broadcasting through fiber optic cable up to the tower site. So our main studios are located on the third floor. We're, we relocated our studios from Winchester. And we propose to broadcast twenty-four hours a day, country news.
Okay, yeah, none of there, and so, is that facility open twenty-four hours a day then? Or is some of it automated?
Uh, no, no, it's, we run satellite radio twenty-four hours a day. So, business hours are eight-thirty to five PM.
That's what I was wondering, so that's what, it's still business hours for you?
Yes. We'd have two employees on site, two other employees working remotely. It's pretty much the extent of it.
Okay.
Checked to the airport regarding any-
Yeah, I saw that in our packet there and then-
Problems with it.
Just in case.
No, uh, no problems with the FCA, so, good.
Any questions from the board? Pretty straightforward. Anybody here from the public have a question? Yeah, okay.
This is gonna be good music unless someone's crap is out there.
Large loyal audience, many people, people from Swansea as well.
Okay, then-
Is your station calling?
It's 104, was it 104?
104.9 FM.
I mean, if there's no comment from the public and from the board, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and we will deliberate. Another straightforward proposal, I think it's a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
Good for them?
We approve it.
Motion by Michael York to approve the multi-tenant application, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Now, the last one is planning board number 23-031, and that's a Honda dealership site plan application. Menandock Land Planning, on behalf of Kate Donovan LLC, requests a site plan review for construction of an external service building at the property located at 567 Menandock Highway. Property is currently shown at tax map 222 lot 30 in the Business District. And, let's take a look here. So first of all, we have the application to look at and consider, and if we deem the application is complete, we can go directly to public hearing if we wish, or postpone it, whatever we wanna do. So. Have a look at the application here. And that's right there. Would you just run down the checklist and point it at your drawing? Thank you. And just state your name, of course, for our record. Oh, you know him, thanks, yeah.
Dave Burdron from Menandock.
We gotta be official, because I know him too.
Yeah, this is the cover sheet, name and address of the owner, of course, on the cover sheet, tax map and lot number. It's on the second page, most of the information is in your checklist, all the information is on the second page because this is a remote page with the general notes for the, for the property. Every page also has a North Carolina, the address of the, the plan preparer is on the page, part of the, part of the cover sheet. Actually, active engineer was S.E. Associates, why did, started from S.E. Associates, whether it was, yeah, the going plan. The city sketch is on, I think it's on the, actually, it's on the cover sheet also. Yep. There's a city sketch on the cover sheet. Sheet F1, I think it's, it's large scale showing all the areas around the property, and the butters adjacent to the site, all the names of all the butters around the property around, around the site. Also, the physical features are way under than twenty feet, permitting the boundary, there are, boundary perimeter is on here and then meets and bounds a mark. Shape and size of existing locations are on here, buildings are on here, and the identification of the access points are shown. They're kind of very lengthy, but they are, there's a driver location there and a driver location there north of, well. There is no landscaping plan, we've asked for waiver for landscaping plan because there's no change to the landscaping. The reason being is that the, the actual location of the proposed new building is, is back here behind the existing building, and it's not a building that's gonna be accessible by the public, it's just a private work building for additional service base for Honda dealerships and the other dealerships. So we are not making any change to the landscaping plan. The lighting is up for sale on the plane, we also have, part of the set, like that last sheet in the set, here's the lighting sheet showing the area where the building is coming from, the new lighting around the building. Natural features of, basically, it's a flat site, the tree lines are shown on here, retention pond from property is here, and there is, you know, paved areas and, and back areas, pretty much all open. The existing proposed grade, we're also showing on site C1, I believe it is, no, it's C2, actually, C2. The grading plan, showing the grades around, proposed for the new building. It's pretty, like again, as I said, it's a fairly flat site, there's a lot of changes to the grading in this location. The water service, the water service is shown also on the property, the building well service is serviced by new line, and that well is also shown, the well is actually right here, the water service is here. Septic system, I'm not sure if that's shown on here, the septic system is an existing septic system, and I believe it's, it's up in this location up here on the site, but in front of the, right here. Surface drainage plan, surface drainage and management is shown again on that show, sheet, sheet one, it shows the area where the addition's gonna be, and that shows the drainage in that area, everything draining back to the existing retention pond. Again, we're requesting a waiver of, of the septic system plan because we're not making any changes to the septic plan, and that's existing on site. The well is shown on the site, it shows where the well was. This plan also shows the soil survey lines, these are the soil survey boundary lines, and key here for the soil survey is right here. There are, we're also asking for a waiver because there are the easements, because there are no easements and no proposed easements, and we did include a copy of architectural plans with the elevation, with the application.
Great, thank you.
Let's go any further, I, I don't understand, what is a reconditioning bay? What is, what happens in a reconditioning-
Let's approve the application first.
Okay, I can't, I don't even know what's happening in there, right?
We'll find out what's going on there. Well, we've got, before we do that, we've got a couple of the waivers that they asked for, whether we grant them a waiver for the landscape plan, location, all existing proposed lighting, oh no, they have that in there, never mind. Let's see, licensed septic system, certification of that, we explained that. And the water service disposal system, same thing, and a waiver for location of existing proposed easements because there are none, are not. So there are one, two, three, four waivers that they're looking for. Anybody object to those? If not, a motion to grant the waivers will be in order.
Make a motion that we grant them those four waivers.
Motion by Brandon South to grant the four waivers just mentioned, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Michael York, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so now the next would be if you think the application is complete, we need a motion stating so.
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Michael York to accept the application as complete.
Seconded.
And proceed to public hearing as well?
Yes.
Proceed to public hearing. Seconded by Brandon. Proceed to public hearing. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So the application is accepted as complete and we are opening up the public hearing. And for you to make your presentation.
Okay. So again, just put back on page. Most of the information, you know, on this sheet is what I talked about. This sheet covers most of the notes for construction and ADA accessibility notes here. Most of the notes over here are erosion control and sediment erosion control as well as seating. Also here is a lot data table which shows what the existing lot size is, size of buildings existing on the, on the site and what are, what the setbacks and requirements are for parking on the site. All that information is included. And of course, because the prior dealership does a lot more parking than what's actually needed for, to meet the requirements of its own requirements. As I mentioned before, this is, this is the site. Route 12 is here, heading this way south down towards Troy. The Honda building, the existing Honda building is right here. Parking along the front and on this side, these are, we have parking display, parking display also over here. This is also, the Toyota Volvo dealership is over here. They have parking lot over here. And for those dealers, and is overlapping in this parking lot, more or less between the two, two dealerships. There are also two larger storage buildings back in, in this area, towards the rear pillar. The proposal is to construct a new building to the rear, behind Honda building. And this is a blow up of that area. This is the rear of the Honda building right here. And this is the edge of the existing pavement right here. And so the proposal would be to construct this new building back here. It's approximately 30 by 80 is the size of the footprint of the building. It'll be a one-story building. We're all overhead doors across the front for access to... That's either on, here's, these are passes around what I'm talking. These are three different sets of, three sets of the building elevations that people can take a look at for what the building will actually look like when it's constructed. And then you can see it's a one-story building with a row of doors across the front. Those will be overhead doors, four, four overhead doors for, for vehicles to be able to drive in the front. Reconditioning bays inside the building.
See what reconditioning is?
Yes, and I'm gonna let Mr. Fetten here and let him talk to what, exactly what a reconditioning bay is.
Are we there now?
Yep.
Okay. Reconditioning is just what it says. Recondition a car. You heard of the word? If you detail your car, you clean your car. Buff your car. Install accessories. Paintless dent removal. Basically, some, maybe a little mechanical work, but anything that improves the quality of the car.
And where is this currently taking place?
Uh, actually, behind Honda. We have four bays right now that we've had, you know, that we had, when we added on to Honda 10 years ago, but we need additional capacity.
Okay, so you just, you just need more of the same. So this is not, this doesn't have to do with washing cars or anything like that? You don't, it's not like a?
Well, we have a car wash.
I know.
So, but...
It's not to replace that or alter that anyway?
No, but, but it doesn't mean that we won't, that sometimes use water to hose something down or something, but it's not specifically a car wash. We have a car wash on, on the lot for that purpose.
And, and this new building will have floor drains in it. Floor drain will be tied into the same water system that the car wash units go through, the same tanks, same, same system. So it's not running out onto the ground. It's all gone into the, into the system that's already existing, handles the water from, from the car wash.
Is that those tanks it shows behind the building, looks like they're attached together? Would you point them out?
Yeah, they're actually, the row of tanks back are right in this area right here. It's like, that's about five or six tanks back here. They're all like-
Satellite storage tanks.
Basically, a big septic tanks.
We basically recycle, we recycle some water and burn some water off.
Yeah.
We do both.
Most of the water from a wash is recycled, but some of it is just, is, goes off and it's burnt off. So as I mentioned, there will be, you know, there'll be one water line will come into the building for, for water for inside the building. And then there'll be the one drain that goes up and ties into the, into the wash system for, for recycling the wastewater from the building. So the, the building itself will have a small, it'll be a small padded concrete pad in the front, just, just, I'm not quite, this asphalt pad added in front, in front of the doors and bays in front. That will also, what we'll do for, this is another area, this is the one showing the grading and erosion control. Basically, this is, this is where the silt pens will be put out around the outside of the building. Grading will, will put a little fill on this side of the building. It'll be basically the at grade on this side, with a little fill in it on this side to build it up a little bit to, to flatten out the area the building is gonna go. As part of the stormwater control for this, the rear of the building, there'll be an infiltration, a, a stone infiltration strip constructed to the rear of the building to allow roof runoff from the building to go into that infiltration strip and infiltrate into the ground. That in conjunction with using the existing stormwater pond, if any additional overflow would be directed in the stormwater pond. Those two things will keep the stormwater runoff as it is today, exactly the same. There'll be no increase in stormwater runoff from the addition of this building by using the infiltration and the storm, stormwater source behind the building as well as the existing retention pond, pond for any overflow. So really, the details is very little. The detail, basically, the foundations and, and the, and the exterior paved area in front as well as paved, paved detail and some pipe details for piping and there'll be some ballards around, around the building to protect the doors so that somebody doesn't hit, hit the door or hit the side of the building. And this plan shows what will be added to the building, the lighting. Basically, the lighting, these, these two big lights right here, right here, another big light here and right, big one up here. Those are the existing parking lot lights that are there now. And so what we'll be, we'll be using, they're gonna be, they're gonna remain, we'll, and then what we're gonna do is we're gonna add basically security and access lighting, security and safety lighting at all the doors. There's a, you know, a man door here, a three-foot door here, a three-foot door here, another three-foot door here. So there'll be security, uh, safety lighting around those doors for entrances and exits and exits from those doors. And then there'll be security lighting around the rear of the building, two lights here and, and two lights here. And you can see that, that as it gets off the property level, the light levels are, when you get away from building, the light level, the property takes it to zero. It'll all cut off fixtures, dark sky compliant fixtures, so that there's, you know, spillage off the, off the site from, for the light. It's, I guess, not a lot of changes to the site other than the fact that they're adding the building for the conditioning, additional conditioning bays. Drainage infiltration I mentioned, lighting as, you know, basically, security and safety lighting. There's will, should be no increase in traffic because of this. This is not, uh, this is not a customer-driven thing. It's not bringing more customers to the site. It's not a new car display or storage or something like that. It's basically what they're doing now on site. They need additional space for that and this is, this is additional space for the work that's happening on site today, so.
Would you just review the drainage and grading plan? Just bring back to that plan there?
Yep.
Review. Just show, show us how it's working, how it works.
Yeah, so this, what happens is this, this, this over here, this is the, the edge of the retention pond back there now. And you, everything right now, today, everything from here and from here slopes in this direction. At the site, there are, there are, there's a run of catch basins that runs along the front. I'm not sure if it's showing. Yeah, through it right here. There's a run of catch basins, there's a catch basin there. There's another one right here, and there's another one down here. And those, there's a line, so there's a line, a line of catch basins right through here right now to pick up runoff off of this area here, the back of the pavement, and then run it down through here and the outlet into the retention pond here. So that, that's existing there now. And all of this area slopes, slopes this way towards this retention pond. So what'll happen is, continue to happen is basically the same thing. The front of this building, this, this paved area from the building will slope back towards each catch basin. And this runoff will run back towards each catch basin, be picked up and run towards the retention pond. And that'll be for the front of the building also because of the pitch roof. The rear of the building, uh, the pitch roof in the rear behind the building, there'll be a stone, a stone infiltration strip in the back of the building. That, or basically what that'll do is allow the water to drain off the building to go into infiltration strip and infiltrate into the ground. This is good Caesar's sandy soil allows for good infiltration rate. So most of the water will infiltrate into the, into the ground, the filtration strip. What does it, will continue in the same direction it does now back into the existing retention pond and be handled by the on-site retention pond that exists as part of the original construction of the property.
Still sheet down into the, the pond, I see.
Yes.
What are the curved lines? You see them on the left?
These, yeah.
Yeah, what are those?
These, but these are grading lines. It's very, very hard to see, but the existing grade line goes right through here. And what we, what we need to know, this is, this is the grade line going through here. There's another one that goes-
Not that though. I mean, I mean the, not the grade lines, but you can see there's a, yeah, you've got your finger on, yeah.
Yeah, these are, these are proposed grades.
Oh, those are grade lines?
Yeah, proposed grade lines.
Really, okay.
It'll be raising up the grade a little bit in this area here, a little bit higher than it is now.
Oh, I see. They've got the numbers. See, yeah, ours is, our drawing is small. I didn't see the numbers in the box. I thought it was some sort of a, a catch basin or something.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, our drawing. Yeah, there's, there'll be just one foot grade lines.
Okay. I see. Thanks.
You're raising the grade to the back, to the side in the back?
This side gets raised up a little bit. It's actually, this, this contour line right here is 605 goes through here. So 605 will be pushed out to this point here. And then 606 will be here, because it'll raise up, the pitch of the building will be 607. So this'll just raising up this side over here. 607 line is, is right here. 606 line is right here. So this is raising this up a little bit, just enough to get higher than, than what's this to the water, it's looking back towards the ground to the building, so it can slope back away from it. So this, this corner does get raised up a little, gets raised up about two and a half.
Okay, and you're, you're not gonna have any sort of piping coming off of the back going towards the retention pond?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yep, no piping. What'll happen is this'll, this'll, this, this, this will be a couple of feet deep, filled with stone, and it'll allow water to infiltrate into the ground. And, and what doesn't infiltrate in, if it flows over the top in a big storm, it'll then, it'll naturally sheet drain into the retention pond.
So this current now is, I remember, goes this way across there. They build that up instead of going this way. It's gonna go through the back. Same thing. The water'll come in and whatever isn't held in that comes above ground, goes straight up there and drops down here.
Where, where, what are the, the boundaries of the existing and proposed pavement around this building?
Right now, around this building, let's see. I flipped this over. This, this is the existing plan. You can see right now, this is the, this is the existing line of pavement right here. And then there's a little, uh, apron in front of this building here. So the next plan again, it shows the new building on that plan. So that's the existing line of pavement, a little apron in front of this building. There'll be a new small apron right here added in the front of this building for the driveways into this building. And that's the only paved area that'll be added. It's this little apron in front of the building.
Okay, so this is actually more or less accurate, showing line around it?
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yep, yep. Yeah, but nothing else, nothing else back in year will be paved. This'll be, this remains as it is today. Just, just this small piece right here in front of the building will be paved.
All right, are there any members from the public out there to speak to this issue? On your gun, go now.
So, I should know, and Jane's probably come along, but the Conservation Commission, so they have no concerns with this.
Oh, and is that the department review? No, that wasn't them. Oh, planning and economic, okay, Conservation Commission weighed in on, thank you.
Who's this? The signature? Who weighed in?
Oh, and then, I don't know who that is.
It's a department head?
It's, it's planning and economic development, but I don't know who that is.
That's J.R. Coffey.
I cannot read the signatures for the lady.
Maybe we should have it printed down the wall.
Yeah. Any other questions for, for the applicant? And I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
And the public hearing is closed.
Okay, so it's a committee head?
Okay. It looks like a pretty straightforward again. They're adding an addition, or not addition, they're adding a separate building out back to it.
It should be, yeah.
Basically detailing, yeah. What we're, what they're doing now would help the benefits of doing it there. It's a morning maybe, see from the road. Be but addition to the facility, I think. So if no other concerns about it, then a motion would be in order to approve the-
We just want to know this-
Make a motion that we approve it?
Motion by Brandon South to approve the site plan. The addition is seconded by Michael York. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you much. Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
So that brings us to discussions. And the discussion, Alatech substantial progress review. And I think, you know, that what we're talking about is that, are there condos in that particular one? I think there are condos in that one. Down on Route 32, right?
Sorry, the fire station.
Right by, yeah, right by where the proposed fire station used to be. So they didn't do it quite a bit for quite a long time. They had an extension once to get going and it looked like their deadline was running out. Julius contacted them and says, you know, your deadline's running out again. So either you start building there or, or you're gonna have to go back to the drawing board. And if they go back to the drawing board, then that means they would not be able to put in that sizable project back there because zoning laws have changed since then. So anyways, what we're deciding is whether or not they have substantial improvement, improvement to the property to continue and go on with their, their project.
A week before when I checked it out, they had nothing done at all. They had cups of brush. But now they've done quite a bit.
They have-
They're power building up. They got a lot of grading done.
Yeah, they got one foundation in and it looks like they've got the framing of one building up there and they do have a lot of grading in there.
It's a lot of work, a lot of work.
Yep.
We're not allowed to take into, into any context the grading as far as substantial is concerned.
We usually do. I'm, you saw that in the site plan. Where is that in our site plan? Do you remember where you saw that? But we, unless it says that we can't.
It doesn't say necessarily that you can't. It says that when calculating or determining substantial developments, it says not to specifically utilize grading, drainage, any level of groundwork as a determination. But I think what is also an important distinction in that particular language is not to say that that is not having any level of substantial impact, but that is the ground level substantial impact. You must reach your level of grading and drainage before you start calculating the next step, which would be any level of, you know, foundation or walls in this particular case. Usually, well, we've sectioned it as it is, but that is what they're doing now. So I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
The building is closed in. It's not just, it's closed in.
Is it closed in now?
Yeah, I went by it today.
It hasn't got a roof on it.
No, but it's closed in, it's not just...
It's just the walls.
The walls, yes.
Again, that's, that's one sixteenth of the proposal.
You could look at it that way, the entire proposal, but that doesn't mean that the planning board's determination of substantial improvements to the property has to be a certain percentage of it, unless we put it on it at, at approval time, which we have on this one here. So, I don't, I would not be in favor of telling them that they are not in compliance or that they haven't done substantial work to the property, send them back to the drawing board, but I don't know, would anyone else agree with that?
No, I, I know it'd be a hardship on them, definitely, but we're at a point where we've got to establish a definition for substantial.
It's, it's on a case-by-case basis, though. We can do that, the planning board can and probably should do that in some cases, but it is still case-by-case. You can't say that X is substantial development for every single project that we see, when in the planning process, if they've got a five-unit department there or something, we might say, okay, well, you've built two of them, that might be substantial, but if they got a third and unit one going up over there, it wouldn't be the same thing. You know, we would do that in, in that particular moment when we actually approve the site plan. Michael?
Would it, would it be reasonable to, at time of, of, of approval, um, sometimes I use this in my own daily work, is, is give them the opportunity to define substantial? Get, let, let them present to you, this is what I think substantial would be on this project. They know their finances, they know their schedule, they know their subs and the rest of that, and then you guys could at least be working off of a platform that was known versus trying to figure out, well, this site's really hilly, this site's got a lot of trees, and we don't know what's in, in the ground in this site and stuff. Well, they've already done the test holes, and they've already got a good sense of what they're going to be doing. They could present to you what they believe would be substantial, and then you could say, man, that sounds reasonable.
You're right, that's right, because they would know the site more than we would know it, because they're going to put a bunch of money into it, yeah. That would be a good way to approach that.
Select them to find the milestones essentially.
Uh, let them try to define them and let the planning board decide whether they're correct or not.
Right.
So I cut my lawn today, is that substantial?
I would say it is.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
If I cut my lawn today, is that substantial?
You don't have a lawn.
You don't have a lawn, Steve, so...
You cut Jane's lawn, that would be substantial.
Have they graded it to the form that it's going to be built?
I don't know if it's final grading, I know they've done a bunch of grading in there. I don't know if it's, it's final grading or not.
Right. And is that building sitting where it's going to sit? Is that...
They're going to move it.
Well, if it's like heaven, really, they can pick it up and move it.
I think what we're getting through is, you know, he's got one building, he's proposed 16.
Wow.
Is that going to be like a, a model home, and then he's going to piecemeal the rest of it out? Over how many years or how many months?
Good question.
I mean, we've got one, two, uh, building, the two apartments going in, a condo's going in. There's no foundation for the rest of that block that's out there.
That same property we're talking about, right? We're talking about two others in town, we're talking about that one, right?
No, I mean, so...
Yeah, no foundations there.
You know, if, to me, if, if you'd put the foundation in for at least that first block, then I could ra, you know, rationally say, yeah, we've got a substantial investment and stuff like that, but if he's only got two up there, and he can, he can't sell any others, what do we got?
Keeps it going like that.
That happened on, the name of it kills me, Magnolia Lane, right?
Oh, in Keene there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there was one house there for years and years and years. Now, Pathus has his construction stuff there and started another house, and I think I saw today there is a foundation in the ground, but...
Takes a while sometimes.
It's, it has taken a while, yeah. And the other guy, and I don't know, that might have been the same guy that's over on 32, I don't know.
Can you, can you review the process? So, um, we will, if we decide tonight that substantial progress has been made, then what?
Then they just continue with their project, and if...
Is there another deadline beyond?
No, there isn't.
No, so, so they're, they could string it out for years?
They could.
Years, like Magnolia.
But if we're to believe all the reports that we hear about this big shortage in housing, then it's probably likely that, uh, it's going to get built, right?
Well, I wonder why it's taken so long?
And they've created a halt.
In building supplies, in particular...
Supply chain issues, labor.
Yeah, lots of things.
I mean, there's all this stuff there, whatever.
There was a crazy big push to do what they did, and they haven't been doing anything for weeks now.
I think, I think it's always difficult for you guys, and I, and I feel for you, because really what you're discussing, is this a good business plan or not? You know, it'd be like...
You mean, is their, is their plan a good business?
Yeah, and it was, it was just like Ferris wheel and all that stuff. I mean, you're really, you know, everybody's wondering, how could this possibly work? Well, it's not really your problem. It can go there or can't it? We don't, we don't, we do business plans, we don't think that this is a good idea or a bad idea from the business perspective, and that's what we're really talking about. It could take forever, it could, but that's a business problem more than anything else in my opinion.
Yep, I agree with your humble opinion. Yep. Yes, Steve?
Is he using the money from the front end to finance the back end?
He may or may not, but it goes to...
Yeah, of course, well, you're saying...
His point. It doesn't matter to us.
It doesn't matter to us because...
No, no, it doesn't, not the planning board. We have, that has absolutely nothing to do with us.
If we were going to get an extension, if you were going to get an extension, I'm not seeing...
But we aren't, we aren't in the process of that. We've already granted them an, an extension, and they use that up. Right, right now, if the planning board says there has not been substantial improvements to that property, then they have to stop what they're doing, they have to come back to the planning board with a new site plan and go through it all again. That's what happens.
And then they have to go on to new zoning regulations.
And they'll have to go on to the new regulations. That's, that's what we're talking about.
It was probably what's there, unless it is.
And it becomes both of ours, probably, because if he can't do it, then it stays looking like that forever. At least now, it's possible that he's going to build something now.
Possible it's not.
Yeah, it is. Well, it certainly looks like he is to me.
What he's got done is he's had some money tied up. He's going to throw it away.
Playing devil's advocate is what I was doing.
Yeah.
We go back to Route 12, by, the apartment complex by Pagey's place.
Yeah.
Okay, we established the fact that substantial improvement was getting rid of the old buildings, tearing it all out and clearing it up, and we said, okay, that's a sub, substantial improvement to the land, and allowed it to go unworked for, what, a year and a half almost?
This time around, I mean, that piece of property, it's been in front of this board for like years and years, all kinds of different things.
So that, so we, we established something there.
With that particular piece of property, but we don't...
I know, but that can come back, that can come back and be presented to us at any time, saying, okay, you did this.
It could, right, it could. I mean, yeah, they can take a board to court for anything if they want, but you're right.
That's why I'm, I'm suggesting that we, we need to work on something that's a little more definitive.
And, but then you're stuck right to that. If you define something, then you're stuck to it. Say you say, say you decide to add something in there that says, okay, if you have a wooded lot and you cleared the land, that shows substantial work done. Well, what if I go and buy a piece of property that's already cleared and I can say, well, look, it's, could I use that as I've done something because I've already cleared it? I think Mike's approach is best, because the applicant knows that piece of property. They're willing to put some money into the piece of property, and at least we don't have to take their advice, but it's a good place to start.
Good place to start, that's the main thing.
Something else I think we might want to consider as well is right now, our timeframe is one year, an ask for extension, and you're on to a year or two. Maybe, given the nature of how, let's say, difficult it is to build, well, the timeframes are, maybe the one year isn't sufficient, maybe it should be three years. And if you don't reach that, you know, potential, you know, construction in three years, maybe that is substantial, right, versus the one-year timer.
Put a state law saying on that, though.
So, I was going to say that's local rates.
Local rate.
Um, this makes me think, don't you think of something else? Bev was on the conservation commission, and this went through, was that, um, Eden Tap development down in a hole between Mount Caesar and Talladega Hill?
Something Canyon.
Hmm?
Yeah, it was something. I remember a name of it.
Oh, yeah, it was Canyon.
Canyon Estates?
Some kind of, Canyon Estates or something, and it sounded like it was out west. And then it came back as Eden Tap, and then it died again.
Right.
And we worked with the, the E.S., getting them to look at that, and it was, it was a real mess, but it just died.
Well, what are we going to do with this one? What are we doing with this one?
That's what we have to decide.
Steve? Substantial or not?
I don't have a vote.
I know, I'm just getting your opinion.
No.
I'm trying to be polite.
No.
No, okay, Brandon?
Yes.
Yes. Michael?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I forgot your first name.
Mike.
Mike.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Uh, me, I, I'd say yes. Richard?
I would...
Just say no, somebody's got to say no.
Steve.
But he can't vote.
Yeah, but if, taking everything into consideration of where we are, you know, I would say yes. He started, you know, I would like to have seen a full foundation for that first block in there, and I would feel a lot better about what the heck's going on, but...
Victoria?
I guess I'll say yes. I, I have real reservations, because...
We all do.
I think we got to give him a chance.
Hurry up and wait.
Jane?
Well, does any, has anybody said anything to him? Has he had any voice in this? Has he been in, he has?
We've had conversations with him in the town hall.
What has he said?
Well, I said, I think it's, I think we've talked a little bit about how it can be difficult finding the, one, the personnel to do some of the work, it's also finding, I think, the contractors to financing to, to, uh, what even the tenant's, what it's going to be in, right?